...group for the Board of Commissioners. We investigate every zoning request that comes to the county and then we make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. All final decisions, though, rest with them and that will happen at their regular meeting, which occurs in about two weeks. That would be on July the 21st. So if you're here for a case, you'll need to come back at that time and give testimony again. It's our custom to invite various members of the local clergy to come and share with us, perhaps lead us in a prayer as they choose, and it's my pleasure at this point to introduce Captain Chris Powell of the Salvation Army. I told Chris he had a short drive this morning because he's from the office right down the street on Waterman Street and we're glad to have him here with us this morning. When he finishes his remarks and his prayer, we'll invite Officer Ott from the Cobb County Police Department to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. When you see him come forward, please stand as you're able for our pledge of allegiance. Captain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day, Father. We thank you for those that are gathered here to meet in a calm and peaceful manner as they discuss things and deal with our community, Father. May their hearts and minds be guided by you as they make decisions that may affect us as we live in this community. We ask all of these things in your precious son's name we pray. Amen. I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda this morning is our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and our zoning staff have fully investigated and all of us are satisfied that all the pertinent issues have been resolved and for which there is no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, who is raising his hand right over here to my left, will read the cases into the record and he'll ask if there's anyone here wishing to speak against, in opposition to, a case. If there is, we may elect to pull that case from the consent agenda, in which case we would hear it in its regular numerical sequence. Next, we will hear the cases that were either held or continued from a previous hearing. And lastly, we will hear all of our regular cases again in their regular numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to come forward and identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their case. Then the opposition will be asked likewise to identify themselves, be counted for the record, and be sworn in and then give their testimony. When a case number is called, again by Mr. Peterson, all those wishing to address the Board will need to come forward and be sworn in by our officer of the day, Mr. Jason Campbell. Jason, raise your hand. Jason sits at the front. Just present yourself to him and he'll take care of that. If you do elect to speak and you have been sworn in, you'll need to sign a sheet that Jason has for you. That's so that we can get the correct spelling of your name. Please be aware that each side addressing the Board has 10 minutes collectively. This is one of the most important bits of information I'll share with you. That's not 10 minutes per person, that's 10 minutes collectively. So pace your comments, be mindful of the length of your comments, so that we can hear from as many folks as we possibly can. And remember, as you speak, there is no rebuttal process at that time. However, we may invite some of you speakers to come back up to clarify an issue and then we can talk to you at that time. John, do you have any additional information for us this morning?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-53, Van Cat Sia Tadatori and Priya Harshini Bandaru. That case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been continued by the staff, will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-66, 825 Mars Hill LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the August zoning cycle, so that case will not be heard today. Mr. Chairman and Board, there are four applicants who are wishing to continue their cases, so I'll call them up one at a time. Would the applicant representative for rezoning case Z-86 of 2014-01 LLC, please come forward. The applicant's still working on his plan, Mr. Chairman, needs to continue it one more month, I believe.
Good morning, Mr. Huff.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Huff of Law Firm, Sam's Larkin, Huff and Valley, and I represent 01. We've been working diligently on a site plan and tweaking it ever so finely and we're getting close, but we need a continuance till next month.
Okay, so let's go ahead and get a motion for this one. This is Gaunt, so need a motion from you, Gaunt.
I will say, I know they have been working with the community and in fact, the community requested a, that they asked for a continuance, so I'll support that and make a motion that we continue Z-86 until our August hearing.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Trombetti, all in favor of the motion? Okay, so that passes and we will hear that in 30 days in August.
Thank you. Rezoning case Z-54, Willie A. Poston Jr. He's also represented by Mr. Huff and they need to continue this case for 30 more days, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Okay, one more time.
One more time, again for the record, Parks Huff. And again, this is similar to the other case. The community has requested that the case be continued, to continue to work on it, and we are agreeable to that request, so ask that we continue it next month.
Okay, Mr. Porter?
And I'll make a motion that we continue Z-54 till our August hearing.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Again, second from Ms. Trombetti, all in favor of the motion. So that passes. So those two cases will not be heard for 30 days. John, what's next?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant for rezoning case Z-59, Artframe LLC, has asked this case to be continued also. I believe there's aspects, they're working out with a community group out in the area.
For the record, my name is John Moore and I'm representing the applicant in this case. We have been working with the community and with label improvement coalition and would like to continue this to add some additional property to this application and hope that will help us work this out. So we need another 30 days if we could have that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. This is also Gaunt. You've got the gold ring this morning.
Looks like all my cases are headed in the wrong direction now. Just kidding.
The right direction.
No, actually, they're in the right direction because I know they are working with the community and this is really so that they can add in more land to it and which is something the community requested and only makes sense, so I'm gonna make a motion that we continue Z-59 until our August hearing.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Second again for Ms. Trombetti, all in favor of the motion. So 59 will be continued for 30 days as well. John?
And the last case I have, Mr. Chairman, is rezoning case Z-67, Black Builders LLC. The applicant representative has requested this case be continued so they can work on the site plan and some engineering problems.
Good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of Black Builders, the applicant. We've been working very closely with our adjacent neighbor, Mr. Kevin Cardinal, as well as our engineers, working on a potential stormwater issue that takes some pretty technical engineering to work with and so there's been a lot of collaboration and a good deal of work that's gone into that. But he's out of town this week, had requested that we push it off for another month so we can get that issue either nailed down and resolved prior to coming before you with the application. So with that, we're requesting a continuance to be able to accomplish that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. I believe this is Ms. Trombetti's.
It is, and I think it's a great idea to continue the case and it was requested by the community, so I'll make a motion that we continue Z-67 until our August hearing.
Okay, we have a second from Judy, all in favor of the motion. Okay, so 67 is also continued. Thank you. To all those folks that got in touch with us, mostly by email, some by phone, want to thank you all. We heard you. Your input really by and large caused us to do these continuances, which is a good thing despite what Mr. Porter said in a joking way. It is a good thing. It allows us time to work out a few final details and we appreciate that very much. What's next, John?
Mr. Chairman, there was one request for an early head count. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-65, Frank Di Ayers? Please raise your hands.
Okay, folks, please hold your hands up and leave them there until we can get a count.
The zoning record would show that there's nine people here in opposition to rezoning case Z-65. I would like to ask the people in today's audience to please turn your cell phones off or put it on silent mode if you have a cellphone. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. So if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
All right, go ahead and read the consent agenda for us, please.
Thank you. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for July 7th, 2015. Rezoning case Z-63, McAllen Capital LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to R-15 for the purpose of a single-family subdivision in landlot 552 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Holly Springs Road, south of Frankie Lane. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on April 20th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Letter of agreeable conditions for Mr. Parks Huff dated June 29th, 2015, and July 6th, 2015. Variances permitted as described in the zoning comments. Cemetery preservation comments with the district commissioner approving the final cemetery preservation plan. Water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-63? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-67, Michael Hamby, request rezoning from R-20 to LI for the purpose of an HVAC office in landlot 824 of the 17th District. The property is located at the southwest corner of Church Road and Holland Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Approval of the 20-foot front setback from Church Road for the existing building. Waiver of 50-foot landscape screening buffer adjacent to residentially zoned property to the west. Contractor use only. Appropriate paved and striped parking to be installed with a minimum of five parking spaces. Allowance of variances as stated in the zoning comments. Final site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. No outside storage of materials. Fire department comments and recommendations. Water and sewer department comments and recommendations. Stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. And the owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-64? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 19, KCMA Corporation, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of two temporary storage tents in landlot 174 of the 20th District. The property is located at the southwest intersection of Airport Road and Barrett Park Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on April 28th, 2015, indicating location of the two proposed tents, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Fire department comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 19? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 20, Garfield McCook, request a special land use permit renewal for the purpose of a group home in landlot 222 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Stylesborough Road, west of Altoona Lane. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Maximum of six residents. Maintain turnaround capabilities of driveway so that vehicles can exit the property frontwards. No exterior signs. Maintain all state and county required permits. Maintain size of lot as it currently exists. Fire department comments and recommendations. And Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 21, Burnt Hickory Church of Christ, Inc., request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of a daycare facility in landlot 291 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Burnt Hickory Road, west of New Salem Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received May 7th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Daycare-related sign to be no larger than three feet by five feet. DOT the approved traffic circulation plan and traffic comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 21? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLUP 7, David C. Kirk, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, request a special land use permit for the purpose of expansion of a lease area and co-location in Metanis in landlot 1061 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Roswell Road, south of Summit Village Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on May 6th, 2015, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Landscape plan to be approved by the county arborist and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to SLUP 7? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
That was pretty painless, John. Let's keep, let's continue with that. That's doing pretty good.
No promises.
Okay, so we have consent agenda, a number of items on there. Are there any members that have any changes or additions to make to any of the steps that we're doing? I do have one. Let me find mine real quick here. Z-64. Okay, on Z-64, I've had a number of conversations with two of the applicants here, in fact, again, late yesterday, and there were just, there was a little bit of confusion on a few items, so I do want to read some additional stipulations into the record, just so there's no question about what it is we'd like you to do on this site. There was a question about any signage that they might put on this site, so I want to be sure they understand that proposed, any proposed signage must comply with the Cobb County standards and ordinances. Now, that goes without saying, but since we had that discussion, I want to be sure they understand that. John also mentioned no outdoor storage allowed, but I was told that they will not staff this location 24/7 and that there will be some deliveries dropped off and left at the door. That won't apply. The outside storage will not apply to deliveries. They can sit there until someone gets there in the afternoon to take things inside. No access allowed to Holland Drive. There was a question about that. Holland is a little side street that runs right beside this building. We first thought that might be a good place to put the driveway, as it turns out, it is not. So no access on Holland. Access will be on Church Road only, and the design and style and width of the driveway has to comply with Cobb standards. The parking lot that John mentioned to be paved must also be striped and accommodate at least five vehicles. The perimeter of the property also needs to be appropriately fenced with a six-foot-high chain-link fence. All exterior lighting must be environmentally sensitive. That means it can't spill out, the lighting can't spill out beyond the property boundary onto the neighbor's property. This zoning will be for this contractor use only, and we do want to waive the curb gutter and sidewalk requirement from DOT on both Church Street and Holland, or Church Road and Holland, until further development occurs. And that was the agreement that I made with the applicant. Now, any questions or comments about that? Okay, that's just for clarification for this applicant, so if we add that, I'm okay with it. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes. We have motion to skip. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
Second from Judy, all in favor. Okay, consent agenda is approved. John, what's next?
Okay, all those on consent agenda, you can leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners' hearing. And moving on to our continued cases. Rezoning case Z-44, 621 Property Investments LLC, request rezoning from R-20 to LRO for the purpose of offices in landlot 332 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Dallas Highway, east of Bob Cox, Bob Cox Road. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-44? Please keep your hands raised. Let the record show there are eight people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the Board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you think you might want to address the Board, come on up and get sworn in. You can always change your mind. You don't have to. Good morning, Mr. Huff. Please go ahead.
Good morning. For the record, again, my name is Parks Huff of the Law Firm of Sam's Larkin, Huff and Valley, and I represent the applicant, 621 Properties, in relation to this rezoning application before you this morning. Wanted to tell you a little bit about the property because I think it's very important to understand how the property is situated to understand the zoning request. The property is on the north side of Dallas Highway, just east of the signalized intersection of Bob Cox Road. The signalized intersection of Bob Cox Road has several commercial uses, including a convenience store, a car wash, and a, excuse me, a self-storage facility. This property actually wraps around and touches the back of the self-storage facility. It's a 2.45 acre tract of property that is heavily, heavily impacted by the fact that it is right along Dallas Highway, a very significant arterial road with a lot of traffic, and it also limits the access to ride-in, ride-out only for this property. And when you look at it on the aerial photograph, you recognize that not only is it heavily impacted with a lot of road frontage and minimal depth along Dallas Highway, it's gonna have a lot of noise and impact from Dallas Highway. You also recognize that across the road, the county recently approved an RSL development that includes assisted living building and a significant complex on the other side of the road that's currently under development. So that's more of an institutional-type use than a pure residential-type use. So when you look at that, you recognize that this is not, I mean, the first question is, is this residential property? This is not good residential property. It's not where you would want to put four homes, which you could get on a 2.45 acre tract. It would not add anything to the residential character of West Cobb. There's plenty of better properties to put residential. So that goes to the next question is, what's available office-wise? This application is being, the applicant is Amy Davis, is the principal, and her husband. Amy is a lawyer. She has a closing practice. Her closing practice is on Dallas Highway. She rents office space just south, south side of Dallas Highway, just, just west of this property, in an office development that is virtually totally full, only minimal spaces are available from time to time. You can see it on that property, they, on the, they are, it's further east from that NRC property. And her husband is an accountant and he has a practice at the Galleria. And what they would like to do, and they both live in West Cobb, past Dewest Elementary School, and what they'd like to do is build an office space for both of them, and this, they've looked around West Cobb for quite a while to try to find a location, and there's just very limited opportunities for office in West Cobb. So they looked at being, having to develop their own property, and that led them to looking at this as a potentially good office location. They're not alone. And one thing you need to understand is, West Cobb is growing with a lot of people, with a lot of residential construction, as you all seen, a lot of applications come forward, and that drives people wanting to have services in the area, having your accountant close by, having a closing practice close by, having dentists, having professional offices close by. One, bring services to the area, allow people in the area that work not to have to drive to Galleria, but actually be able to work close to their homes. So that's why I said the first component is, is this residential property? And I don't think anyone can look at this and say, it's residential property. Building it as residential would add nothing to it. If you put offices here, you're adding something else to West Cobb. You're adding a use that is going to be helpful to the area and is adding a component, adding a use that is good for the area. The next question is, is this compatible with what's around? And how do we make that happen? So if you look at what's around us, you can see that there's residential to the north, and what I would say is, is that a low-rise office with landscaping, buffering between us and them, we will be a better neighbor than if four homes were put here. If four homes were put here, one, you've got the noise from Dallas Highway echoing through, you'd have no buffer. You'd have backyards, you'd have dogs, you'd have, you know, activity in the backyard, playsets and stuff like that. That would be more intrusive than the back of professional offices that are operated during normal business hours, that are landscaped during, by professional landscapers, once a week during business hours. So as professional offices, we will be a better neighbor and better buffer than a potentially residential use on this property. So I do think that we can fit in into this area. And I know you've received a lot of letters on this application, a lot of very thoughtful letters in support noted that there's a huge demand for office space. I know the opposition's talked about that there's some office zone property in the area. There is a large office zone property behind the Home Depot, kind of behind Barrett and Dallas Highway. It's a large tract. It's been available since Home Depot was built. It's not accessible, has no visibility. It's a huge, you know, it's a large tract, so it would take an office development to come in there. It is not a realistic alternative. Other than that, there's really very limited office availability in the area, and certainly having the flexibility in square footages and such is very much an issue for offices as they, they all need different types of square footage and different types of arrangements. This would, we have sat down and talked to the neighbors and tried, tried to come up with some conditions and stipulations, and we submit a letter dated July 1 that encompasses some of those changes. The first thing you will note, if you look at the revised site plan that's attached to that, and if I can get that put up on the monitor here. You will see that in the staff analysis, there were four buildings and they were kind of clustered around a parking lot area. We've tried to revise the site plan, receiving input from the neighbors, and what we've done is we've lined up three office buildings so that they face Dallas Highway. So the back of these buildings is to the residential that is behind us to the north that includes the lake property. It includes a 20-foot landscape buffer, and you see a representative landscaping along there, so it'll be significant growth of buffering in there that, again, if this was developed residential, there is no buffer required. So I, you know, having these two-story brick, professional offices lining up in line with Dallas Highway will create a visual and a sound barrier, if you will, for sound echoing from Dallas Highway, because this is on an uphill part of Dallas Highway, so you get noises of cars are pulling that hill coming up to Bob Cox intersection. So we revised the site plan to try to accommodate the request, to make very clear that this is only an office development just for this property. It doesn't, it, no, it cannot expand to the property behind us. We had a, before the parking lot, it looked like it kind of lined up. So we've got parking clearly in front of the buildings. Again, the back of the buildings with limited lighting would be behind us, and we think with all these limitations and the site plan that this would fit in and be a transition from the intensity of the signalized intersection of Bob Cox Road as you go south. Some of the other concerns I, we've heard is, you know, that there's flooding problems, there's drainage problems, and we will have a detention bond. We will work with the Stormwater Management Division. I have the utmost confidence, and we've already had preliminary discussions on how to manage the drainage and ensure that there is not a problem created by this, you know, it's a development of a very minor scale. So we will be able to handle the environmental, the drainage issues that neighbors have concerns about, and I certainly think that your Stormwater Management Division can handle that. So as I said, to wrap it up, I mean, the first thing you look at is this residential property. It's been for sale for as long as I can remember. It has been zoned residentially, and it has never sold. So you have potentially an unconstitutional zoning on the property because it cannot be developed for residential. If it did, if someone came in there and said, I'm gonna put four homes there, it adds nothing to the residential character of West Cobb. It's putting homes in the wrong location and it's not a good place. It'd be a ride-in, ride-out. It's, it's not a residential. The second question, office needs are there in West Cobb. There's a lot of people who've moved to West Cobb that want services in West Cobb or want a bit of work close to their homes. This is part of that. There's limited opportunities for places to do that. This is one of those limited opportunities. So we think that this is a great opportunity to add a use to the area, and I think with the site, site plan we've submitted and the stipulations we have in our letter July 1, buffering and such, we can fit in, be a good neighbor, and not have a negative impact on the existing residential use. I greatly appreciate your time and your consideration and be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. It's amazing, again, that these lawyers always use up their entire 10 minutes, right to the second. You did good. Okay, this is in dis- Okay, this is in District 1, and that belongs to Mr. Gunthers. I'm sorry, opposition. We need to hear from the opposition at this time, jumping the gun. So if you will, come on up. If you've been sworn in, come on up and give us your name and tell us what you'd like us to know.
Can I interrupt for just one second?
Yeah.
During Mr. Huff's presentation, he mentioned that a closing attorney owns this property, and it's one that I happen to use in my real estate practice, so I think I should recuse myself from this case.
Okay, completely understand. Okay, go ahead, sir. Give us your name.
Good morning. My name is John Spencer. My wife, Linda, and I, we own the 750-foot, 9.2-acre parcel, which is just to the north, which would be the 750-foot boundary, the long hypotenuse that's in yellow there on that property. Our house is the one that's located right there, and of course, we own part of the lake also. So our family, we've lived on this property for 32 years, and notwithstanding Mr. Parks Huff's observations about how this needs to be an office complex, what he didn't mention was, there is a bit of historical provenance here with this property. I happen to have a document in my hand here, which is the Moore, Ingram, Johnson &amp; Steel Z-22 application. Now, I stood in front of this, at this very podium, and I spoke to Judy, and I spoke to the gentleman over there, let me get my reading glasses on here, Mr. Peterson, 13 years ago. And then I also spoke to Sam Olens and Bill Byrne, and Bill Askey, who was the district commissioner in 2002. This particular zoning, which has been tweaked just the tiniest little bit, is virtually identical to the Z-22 zoning, which was unanimously five to nothing, turned down by the planners and also by the zoning commissioners back in March of 2002. And I just wanted to bring a little historical perspective to my observations, notwithstanding those observations by Mr. Parks Huff, the representative here. Our principal reason for not wanting this property going through under its current scenario is the fact that there is a zoning plan, and the zoning plan specifically has this set out as R-20. We, at times in the past, have been approached to partner our parcel, even with Mr. Ogle's parcel, which I believe he's still the owner of this property, and he was the person that presented the Z-22 zoning in 2002. And we have had discussions behind the scenes on what might be a best effort in order to close up this eastern node, which is part of the larger node of the community there, just to the west of where we live, where the avenues is, all the way out to Castile Road. And the long and the short of it is, for all of the same reasons that we opposed this particular zoning back in 2002, those still remain. This is residential property. It does have residential application. If you would, any of you would like to come out and see what it looks like, you're quite welcome to drive down my driveway and see how beautiful it is and how pristine it is because we've elected to let the trees remain and let the site remain in its more or less undeveloped presence. So with that being done, I know some other folks here want some other comments to make, but those are my comments, and we are the most immediately affected party by this transaction, should it take place. I would like to ask one thing. Mr. Huff indicated that he has talked to the neighbors. I have not received until June 25. This is my first mailed notification, no phone calls, nothing whatsoever to us, and we are the most affected neighbors on this particular piece of property. So I am just a little bit offended by the fact that we were not involved in any other discussions, because in the unlikely event this property does get developed, we would certainly like a larger barrier than the one that they have. The original one was 30 feet wide that would border our property. They've reduced it to 20. The original property asked for 20,000 square feet, Z-22. It's now down to 17,000. And also, the number of units was four, and of course, it's down to three. And there was 69 units, parking spaces originally. Now it's been tweaked down to 61, which of course is less the building that they've removed from the Z-44 application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next speaker, please.
My name is Duke Nickel. I live at 3140 Dallas Highway, and my home is right beside Vic Spencer's. Because of the trees, you can barely see it. Oh, okay. You see where it is. That's an aerial rendition of the site, and it says on the aerial rendition, "Not exact." That property, yellow line of the proprietary zoning, is much, much, much closer to my back door. It's probably 40 feet from my back door. Anyway, representing many of the citizens, most of the citizens, on Brownies Lake, we've met with the developer, I believe, three or two or three times, three or four times, cordial meetings, very, worked together and so forth. Bottom line, we weren't able to reach any kind of compromises acceptable to the residents of the lake. We looked at other zoning cases. Z-42 is similar, but Z-42 was a rezoning from a split-zoned area. This is not split zone. This is R-20. We met with District, our District 1 Commissioner, and later with Mr. Braden from Stormwater Planning or Stormwater Management. We had requested a couple of meetings with our planning commissioner through our District Commissioner, but I think due to out-of-the-country travel, et cetera, we weren't able to work that out. The point of that is that we tried to do the right things with the county staff. Our issues and concerns get down to, oh, and we looked at the stormwater, the Stillwater Court case, where Stillwater Development, they had concerns about protecting their lake. Bottom line, that got, the rezoning got approved. The lake was damaged. The citizens had three assessments, took legal action. The court awarded the homeowners association $5.5 million for lake damage. So we're very sensitive to anything that might damage the lake. We're extremely sensitive to any rezoning that goes from R-20 to commercial. We worked hard to protect our land. I, for one, carried a petition years ago to change the land use plan to rural residential. Each year, we've tried to make sure that stayed updated and so forth. So as far as protecting our land and our area and being good community citizens, we didn't just drop off the turnip truck. We've been very involved in trying to protect our property. The proposed development absolutely does not complement the character of the area. We have horses, abundant wildlife, deer, turkeys, doves, beautiful land, a magnificent 11-acre private lake, minimum lot sizes of 2 to 12 acres. Last, not last week, but I guess a week and a half ago, District 1 Commissioner, June 30th, visited our property, stood across the lake, and I believe his exact words were, "This is magnificent. It's spectacular. Never knew this existed." And that's important because these folks are now looking at a forest behind Mr. Spencer's house. What they will be looking at is three large office buildings and Dallas Highway. You can't see Dallas Highway from over there now. Those residents consist of two Delta pilots, two doctors, a retired executive from Coca-Cola Corporation, and two other executives, who all have invested heavily in their homes and their properties, absolutely gorgeous properties. So this in no way enhances it. And by the way, on the zoning application, it said the three buildings will cut down on highway noise. In agreement with the attorney representing the buyers, it was stated that over 100 mature trees will be cut down. I don't buy, I'm going to cut down your forest, but put up three buildings to cut down the noise. The forest cuts down the noise, so that's not a valid argument to me, anyway. The potential impact on the lake, this is sloped land.
You need to wrap it up, if you have another speaker especially.
Okay. Final thing, flooding. I'm told all the water will go in the stormwater system down the lake or the retention pond. The stormwater system is beyond capacity now. Stormwater management has looked at it. It's currently doing damage, the stormwater, to private property, and to me, that's a showstopper. You can't consciously approve more intensity when there's already property being damaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. We have just a few seconds left. You want to come on up? You can do it quickly. If we run over, we'll add that back to the applicant.
Picture number two, please.
Give us your name.
Honorable Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Gabriella Corneos. I am a 21-year resident of Heritage Oaks, and the plan representative, the communications chair, and a former board member. And a number of people in my community, which was built in 1993, are opposed to this development. I'm not going to, everybody's already stated the reasons why the land use plan, I'm going to focus, and the cutting down of the trees, okay? And the problem with that is that the percentage of surface in the proposed plan is greater than the existing, in the existing zoning and land usage that sits around the lake. And the Browns Lake feeds the Hardage Tributary, which feeds directly into Heritage Oaks' common land and wetlands running directly along Dallas Highway. There is no sewer there. All the water coming off, the water comes off the lake, it originates at Lake Somerset, goes through a tributary into Browns Lake, okay, and then it feeds into the tributary that runs right through the woodlands along the front of Heritage Oaks. And there's a picture of that here up on the screen. You can see it's highlighted in white where the Heritage Oaks property is, where the new SRL is, and where Z-44 is. The water, there's a photo up there with the water and the lake at maximum level, and it shows the spill-off draining into the Hard, to the Heritage Oaks, to the Hardage Tributary. Heritage Oaks' land also borders the west bank of the Mud Creek. We own all the land in front on Long Dallas Highway east of the West Sandtown Light. We, our eastern boundary is the west bank of the Mud Creek. Everybody's water, stormwater, seems to be now starting to flow more and more into this land that we would have to pay cleanup costs on in the event of flooding because the county would not. Now, that might have been okay 65 years ago, but it isn't okay today, okay? There is no sewer. There are ditches that run up to the West Sandtown Light, and then it's our land. And who's going to take care of that? We cannot become the storm management basin or depot for anything like Z-44, anything like Sterling Estate Senior Living, anything up and down the highway that might dribble down and go under the highway in a culvert and then dump into there or dump into the lake. If the lake overflows, and these are pictures of the lake right after the rain, okay, at maximum level, all of that spills into us, okay? And that is why we are very much opposed to this, apart from it doesn't conform to the land use plan. They're going to destroy the lake area, which is an asset to the county. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Gabrielle. We're going to have to close this portion of the hearing. We did go over by nearly three minutes in fairness.
I apologize for that.
That's okay. We try to be as lenient as we can. Mr. Huff, give you a couple of minutes, if you want to, just in fairness, if you want to give us another comment or two.
Yeah, I would. I would like to first respond, if I can get the aerial and pull off the zoning on it. I'd first like to respond to the statement that, you know, they're going to cut down our forest. This is not their forest. This is not their land. This is someone else's land, is zoned residentially, is zoned R-20. If homes are put on here, the trees are coming down, and there is no buffer required with a residential zoning on this property. So it is not land, it is not their forest, the trees are not owned by them, the trees are on this property and will come down under a residential development. So I'd like to make that point. The gentleman to the north made an impassioned argument that, you know, that he might be impacted by this. There was a proposal, his, this property and the property to the north was under contract for an RSL facility with 70 units. So there was at one time a plan to actually include the property to the north with this property and do a rather intensive development on both properties. That would put intense development along the lake, and I think that would have an impact on the people that surround the lake. This is 2.45 acres that is heavily impacted by Dallas Highway. The properties on the lake, they have the benefit of the lake that, you know, that balances out the impact of Dallas Highway. We have no benefit. We don't border the lake, and we are just heavily impacted by the commercial to the north, to the amount of traffic on Dallas Highway, and that is, I think, a very significant factor. This is not residential property. Anyone looking at it knows it's not residential property. The environmental questions, again, we, and we put a stipulation in that we've already talked to Stormwater Management about how we're going to handle water, push water of, instead of going into the lake, going towards the existing storm system that's along Dallas Highway. I understand their concerns. This is a 2.45 acre tract. It's not a large tract, so I don't, I think there's certainly ways to handle that, and it is not a large development. As their maps show, the development of the 20 acres to the south, that's a large development. But, you know, that's something that, again, they're also taking that into account. But this is 2.45 acres. Let's look exactly what we're proposing today, just 2.45 acres, going from an R-20 that is not a good use for that property to an RSL with professional offices, which will be quiet and will be adding to the area. We appreciate your time and your consideration of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. We're going to go ahead and close this portion of the hearing. This is in District 1, belongs to Mr. Skip, so we'll let him take it from here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Am I on?
You. Try.
Yes. Okay. First off, I think Sean Spencer and Steve Nickel, is that the name? Yeah. You made.
Oh. I'm pushing the wrong button.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was pushing the green button. There we go. Now I can hear myself. Several of you made the comment that I was not able to meet with you, and I apologize for that. I was out of the country. In fact, I was way off the grid, up on some dirt roads in northern Canada that I sort of wish I were at now. Just beautiful place, and, you know, but normally I do like to meet with everybody involved, however I can possibly do that. I have received, we have received many, many, many emails over the last several months that this zoning application has been on the agenda, as has been continued and so forth, and I've tried to respond to every single one of those, at least acknowledging that I received it. I'd like to go through a number of the issues and just sort of nail a couple of these things down. I'd like to call Mr. Dave Braden up here from Stormwater Management first, just to talk about stormwater management, and what would the differences be if this were developed residentially versus the way it's planning to be, you know, proposed to be developed? And what are you going to do? You know, what would your plans be to mitigate whatever negative implications there are for the community to the north?
Again, David Braden with the Stormwater Management Division. Commissioner, you're correct there. As has already been mentioned, there are some drainage issues associated with this site. The majority of the site drains to the northeast through Mr. Spencer's and Mr. Nickel's property, ultimately winding up into the lake. There is a, maybe, I guess, maybe a third or quarter of it drains to the right-of-way of Dallas Highway, and there is a, GDOT has a paved drainageway that runs down that right-of-way, not quite, maybe halfway down to Mud Creek, right before it gets to the Heritage Oaks subdivision. It becomes a natural, more of a natural channel. That being the case, there is not any defined conveyance through either one of those residential properties to get this water to the lake. So there's problems in both directions, and my recommendation to the applicant was, is if this development goes through, and whether it's residentially developed or commercially developed, we'll have to do this same thing, but through the detention facility, drain all the water to the right-of-way and carry it down that conveyance, because it ultimately winds up in the same, in the same stream before it gets to Heritage. before it gets to Heritage Oaks property to begin with. Obviously, if it's going to be, as was already mentioned, if it's residential, you know, they're going to, they're going to cut down probably as many trees as they're going to do with this development. But with the commercial development, there will obviously be more impervious coverage. So there will be, pond will have to be bigger, and there'll be more volume we run off to deal with. So obviously, that's, that's an issue you all will need to deal with. But it was something that can be dealt with stormwater-wise. There, as I mentioned, the capacity of that existing paved channel, I think we saw some pictures of it previously, remember? You see that roadside ditch with the pavement? That does have capacity. The driveway culverts, from speaking with the homeowners, have adequate capacity. They would be limited to the capacity of those with whatever discharge we would allow them to make. When it gets down to the natural channel, that's where the problem is, because it doesn't have the same kind of capacity. And so that would be something that we would need to deal with at plan review, and they would probably be, have to increase their stormwater management to account for the capacity that's there. So that'd be something that we would deal at plan review.
Okay, great.
Any other questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I'm going to describe.
We don't take any further comments unless you're called up here, okay? Thank you.
You know, what, I'm going to describe what I think is a reasonably good use solution for this property, but then there's a problem. I buy most of the arguments, if not all of the arguments, that Mr. Huff makes about it's not a particularly, it doesn't seem to be a particularly good residential piece of property, at least as evidenced by the last 12, 15 years, or whatever it's been that it's been on the market, and it hasn't sold for that. And I suspect that many people in this room would probably find it difficult to justify building a home that close to Dallas Highway on a piece of property that slopes into the highway the way it does. So I buy that argument. I buy the argument that a properly done low-rise office building complex would be a better neighbor potentially, and most likely, I think, in my opinion, than several residential homes in that area. There would be less destruction of the trees, there would be less noise, just less intensity, I would think. I'm not sure where the supply and demand sits with low-rise office buildings in this general area. I've asked the question, you know, where do we, is there really a strong demand that's, you know, there's no space really available, and so something new has to be built? I don't know the answer to that, but I suspect that we probably do need some low-rise office building in this area. And then finally, the point was made that we need to close off the NRC that's to the west between this property and Bob Cox Road. We need to close that off in a nice, in a nice way. We have a couple of things in, that are active that will help us do that. We have the Dallas Highway corridor, building plan, standards for what building should look like, and we have our future land use map, which gives us, you know, some guidance. But therein is where the rub is with this whole thing, in my opinion. Could we, could we put up the future land use overlay on this so that we show what's Okay, so all of that light green area is, even though it's zoned R20, it's, in the future land use map, it is rural residential, which allows for zero to one units per acre and does not include R20. So one of my first questions was, why is this rural residential when all the properties in there are zoned R20? All those, you know, the, all of that, that whole large piece. And if you back out, you can see it's more expansive than just what we're seeing right now. The answer is, well, in the future, some of those lots may get sold and be proposed for future development with more, with subdivision in there for more lots. And so it's important to preserve the character of this area by retaining, at least in some people's opinions, the rural residential nature of that overall larger parcel. So how do we, you know, the question is, how do we resolve the issue between this is rural residential, and we need to close off that neighborhood activity center node, and we need to deal with the fact that this particular small parcel that we're dealing with, the 2.45 acres, is not particularly amenable to residential development? A solution that's been proposed, that I've heard of, is to do, and it was mentioned today by Mr. Nichol's, similar to Z42, maybe rezone this in a way that it's split-zoned, so that there's a, an R20 buffer along that north boundary, if you will, the boundary that's contiguous with Mr. Spencer's, mostly contiguous with Mr. Spencer's property, and make that a substantial buffer and make that, keep that as R20, and put it into perhaps a conservation easement so that it can't be torn down, it can't be, no roads can be built in there, no vehicle or traffic could happen in there without prior authorization and agreement and approval from the county. And then let the balance be low-rise office building. To me, and particularly if the footprint of the low-rise offices that go in there are small enough, it seems to me like that's a great solution for this area. But I don't think at the time right now, it's appropriate right now to make that kind of a decision. We have a future land use map. We have a process that goes on at least annually to identify areas of the county that are, that need to have their future land use map designations changed or modified in some way. And in fact, later this week, we're kicking off, as I understand, at this year's process for looking at changes to the future land use map. I don't see an urgency in making a decision right now with respect to this property, but I'd rather see us just hold off, let this go through the process, so that the people who are impacted have an opportunity to weigh in and really weigh in, rather than just coming to a hearing and hoping to be heard and sending an email and hoping that that's heard with maybe no or little satisfaction. So my, even though I like a proposed solution for this with a substantial buffer that could be a conservation easement in perpetuity, I still think that the proper thing to do is to make a motion to deny this and to ask that this particular parcel be reviewed and looked at as part of this comprehensive plan review that's getting launched later this week. So that's where I stand.
Are you making that as a motion?
No, I'm asking for discussion. If there's no discussion, then I'm ready to make a motion.
I can make a comment.
Okay. Kristi.
I just wanted to say that I agree with kind of your analysis of the situation. I think lower, impervious, if this were to be LRO, would be important. And also, bringing in the property to the west, we haven't heard from them, as far as I know, the other, the other little house that's right on Dallas Highway. And for this to be done ideally, I think that would need to be a part of a future application as well, so. But I do hope this will be on our agenda for consideration when it's time to do land use plan discussion.
Philip, are you taking notes? Okay. All right, anyone else? Judy, anything? Skip, why don't you go ahead? I'm sorry, do you have any?
Yeah, I will comment that it's been representative to me that the woman who owns that parcel, that small parcel right there that the arrow is pointing to right now is supportive of that, of the parcel we're dealing with becoming LRO. And she apparently feels that in the future, you know, she would like to be LRO as well. So I think the ingredients are there for the future land use comprehensive plan review to look at this in a systematic way with lots of public input and to come to a resolution that, you know, is going to be a good compromise for everybody that would be in all of our best interests here in West Cobb. So having said that, I'd like to make a motion that we deny C44. We recommend denial of C44 to WOC.
Have a motion. We have a second from Judy in the area of comments. I tend to agree with Skip. I think it should be pretty obvious that Mr. Gunther's spent a lot of time working on this. He's talked to a lot of folks and tried to analyze this in so many different ways. A split zoning like this, we don't do these often, but it does happen, and sometimes it's the best solution, and I think we should give that some due consideration. I do tend to agree, this is not the best site for a residential. I do think an LRO, low-rise offices, might work. Four buildings is far too many. I'm not sure three will work, but two, if they're properly spaced with some good buffering around it, might be just what we need. But again, I think Skip's on the right track. So any further comments? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of the motion to deny. So that passes 4-0. Thank you, folks, very much for your input. John, let's move on to the next one. If you do choose to leave, folks, please do so quietly and don't gather in the back of the room, because we are being televised and all of that's picked up on the microphones. So thank you very much. John?
Yes, sir. Pres zoning case Z49, Polte Home Corporation requests pres zoning from O&amp;I and RM12 to RM8 for the purpose of attached residential in landlots 765, 766, 819, and 820 of the 17th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Gilmore Road and Beetavon Trail and south side of Cumberland Parkway east of I-285. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to pres zoning case Z49? That, to record, shows none opposed.
Morning, Mr. Valley. Are you ready?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is an unusual event with no opposition, so I will guarantee you, I will stay within the 10 minutes. For the record, James Valley here today on behalf of Polte Corporation on Z49. It's an application to go from commercial O&amp;I and RM12 to a residential category of RM8. The project site you see before you today is there depicted with the arrow. It's surrounded by Interstate 285, Cumberland Parkway, currently zoned O&amp;I. There's an RM12 zoning category to the south that is currently apartments, and it's surrounded on all sides by commercial O&amp;I. As you see before you today, it's an application for 28 single-family homes. The sales prices on the homes will start at $300,000 and go up. We have exact product in the area. We think it may be higher than $300,000, that product, exactly as the product is going right now for an average sales price of $385,000 per home. The homes will have 2,500 square feet minimums and up with two-car garages, and the architecture will be three-sided architecture with a mixture of brick, stacked stone, and other combinations. And then the interiors will have superior interior finishes with design options. Some examples of what you see before you there are the homes that are being proposed with the architectural design, again, $300,000 and up, the superior interior options that will be provided, the different homeowners in the development. You can see the quality and the different design options there. I want to briefly touch on the comprehensive plan and future land use map. We contend that Z49 does, in fact, meet both of those. It's located within a regional activity center, which calls for high-intensity development. In fact, it is properly in the category that could allow for high-rise residential up to 300 feet in height. The subcategory for this property is indeed high-density residential, with densities ranging from five to 12 units per acre. It's surrounded, as you saw in the earlier aerial photograph, by commercial Interstate 285, Cumberland Boulevard, and the apartments. And the proposal before you today is to take the commercial O&amp;I and transform it into the RM8 with 28 homes, which will result in a 6.73 units per acre. We think it's probably a little bit low, lower than that, because we didn't include the right-of-way of Gilmore Road, which we'll touch on before. But again, the 6.73 is on the low end of the range of five to 12 density that's allowed. You have a stipulation letter before you that was timely filed, and I won't go through every item in that letter, but the homes, again, will be for sale with the typical 10% limitation on rental. There will be a mandatory HOA that will be responsible for the landscaping, the entrance and signage, and other features you typically see assigned to the HOA. There'll be a ground-based monument-style entrance sign. There's going to be a landscape plan that will be submitted for approval to the county arborist. You have it before you. The elevations that we went through previously, they're attached and made part of the stipulation. They're not just examples, but are in fact a part of the stipulation for this application. And then there are other protections that are contained within the stipulation letter. I want to touch briefly on some pertinent facts of Z49. I mentioned earlier, the site plan included an old remnant of Gilmore Road before it was bisected by Cumberland Parkway. Staff noted on the analysis that that would need to be abandoned by the Board of Commissioners, and in fact, has already been completed and was completed on June 23, 2015, so that will not be an issue. There were some initial questions regarding the stormwater design controls on this property. We've got a GDOT slope easement. The design controls are going to be in the northeast corner of the property. They're all going to be underground, and they will comply with staff comments who noted that the controls needed to be in the northeast corner of the site. There was an initial question about whether or not this was in the Vining's Vision master plan. It is not within the focal or transition area, but is on the outer edge of the area of influence, but not within the actual area itself. As you can see before you, this cutout shows the purple dotted lines there is the limits of the Vining Vision plan, and then Gilmore Road, as you can see from the red area, where the site is, is located outside of that area. And then before you is a site plan that depicts where the stormwater will be in the upper right-hand corner there. There was a little bit of confusion that may have been my fault. This is a topographical side plan, and the two areas that may otherwise, on the upper left and right, that look like ponds, that maybe me and other laypersons are in fact not that, and that's just the topo lines. And the entire stormwater detention will be underground on this site, with the exception of that small pipe there that we've already received permission from GDOT to have in that slope easement. The staff analysis on this project is yes. They have submitted it to you and have stated that the proposal will be a suitable use in view of the adjacent properties. It will not have an adverse effect on the surrounding property. It will not cause a burdensome use of existing streets or utilities. As we touched on, it's in conformity with the policy intent of the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan and is in a regional activity center. And based on all of those factors, your staff recommends approval at 28 homes to an RM8 category to the site plan that was filed with the Z49 application. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we would ask that you follow your staff's recommendation of approval and approve this application for 28 homes. I'm at four minutes left. Mr. Chairman?
You did good. Thank you, sir. This is in District Two, and that is my district, so I'll handle the discussion on this. James, come on back up. Let me ask you just a couple of quick questions. You mentioned that this is not in the Vining's Vision boundary. Frequently, though, we do hear from people in Vining's when it, when we have a zoning that touches their boundary. I have not heard from any, have you?
I have not. And again, when I looked at this, it was in what they looked at when they did the Vining Vision plan as an area of influence, but they decided not to put it in either the focal area or the transition area.
Yeah, the county helped them in establishing their boundary, and so this is outside the boundary. I do think, though, in looking at this and then in looking at the Vining's Vision plan, you are pretty much in compliance with what they would want anyway, so I think we're good to go there. Talk to me about building heights. What's going to be the maximum height of this?
We're not asking for, it's going to be the heights that you see there. We're not asking for the 300 feet. It's just the typical residential height, 35 feet.
35, under 40 feet, though. Okay. Density, we went over. Detention, we did have an issue with detention. I've spoken to Dave Braden from Stormwater Management about it. You and I have gone over that. You mentioned that it's by and large underground detention, but I do believe there is some above-ground detention as well. Do you have that planned by any chance? Can you put that up on the board very quickly?
I handed out my hard copies of it. There it is. It's corny, I always have to say.
But there is one site, one portion of, yeah, there you go. There is one area, at least one, maybe two, that will be above ground, correct?
No, that was the confusion. Those were just topographical lines on the plan, so what you see there in the top-left and top-right are not going to be ponds. All of it's going to be underground. That's just showing what the topo is.
Okay, just want to be sure we had that cleared out. John Peterson, do you know offhand, I'm surprising you here, so I apologize, guest parking, do we have guest parking covered?
I don't know that off the top of my head, Mr. Chairman, but there are guest spots shown on this plan.
I don't know that off the top of my head, Mr. Chairman, but there are guest spots shown on this plan. Do you know, Mr. Valley?
We have our fire marshal represented here. Are we okay on guest parking? We are. Okay, so we got that covered. Any other questions for James? Okay, just for the record, anyone in opposition to this? I don't believe we had any, but I need to get that on the record. Not seeing and hearing any, then we're concluded. I'm ready for a motion unless we have other questions or comments. Okay, on Z forty-nine, I would recommend approval of Z forty-nine, subject to all staff comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management, Fire Department, DOT, and Water and Sewer. Also, subject to the letter received from Mr., the STIP letter received from Mr. Valley dated June the twenty-third and the site plan that is attached. I would want to make just a few minor tweaks to it. On stipulation number one, at the end of, let's see, the end of the second sentence, I want to change that from three-sided architecture to four. These are attached to buildings. In doing so, that means we're going to have brick on all the sides, and I do think that makes sense, and it'll be an easy change to make, so I'd recommend four-sided architecture on that. Stipulation number six, let's see. I'm going to cover this stormwater detention facility because frankly, I'm still not clear. I do think there is some stormwater that is to be collected above ground. So let's add at the end of number six, "Location type and size of stormwater detention facility to be finalized at plan review," which, of course, it would be. "And all above-ground detention must be screened on all sides by evergreen shrubs and trees and have a five-foot-tall, black-clad chain-link fencing installed for security." So if we do have an above-ground, then we need to do that. Number thirteen F, let's see here. I want to add to the end of thirteen F where it talks about open spaces. "Any detention areas, above-ground detention areas must be landscaped, which will be approved by the county arborist and the district commissioner." And number fifteen, add at the end, including the words "including the location and number of required guest parking spaces," which I do think we're okay on, but just to be sure. That's basically it. I think it's a good STIP letter. We're excited to get this corner developed. I think it's a great site for this. So that would be my motion for approval. Can I get a second? We have two seconds. That's wonderful. We'll go with. John, did you have a question?
Do you want to put that on consent agenda?
I think that's a good one for consent for the BOC, so we'll recommend that as well. Is that okay with the second, whoever that is? We'll let Skip be the second on this one. So we have a motion and a second with a few changes, all in favor of the motion. So that's approved five-zero. Thank you very much. John, what's next?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Res zoning case Z fifty-eight, Gary Tillman and Alan Kennedy request rezoning from NRC to LI for the purpose of a contractor's office in land lot two ninety-nine of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the west side of Old Concord Road, south of Warner Street, and on the southeast side of Clay Drive. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z fifty-eight? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Since no one's here in opposition, can I take all twenty minutes?
Nice try. Go ahead, Mr. Huff.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks, Huffs, and Law Firm, Samzalk and Huff and Valley, and I represent Gary Tillman and Alan Kennedy in relation to this rezoning application before you. The subject property, if I get the aerial photograph of the property pulled up in a second. The property is on Old Concord Road. It's north of Pat Mel Road, east of South Cobb Drive. It's in an area that's got a lot of different uses in the area. It has some apartments. It has, just to the south of us, is a light industrial, a metal recycling fabrication business. Further south is some self-storage facilities. To the north of us is a property that's zoned general commercial with a rather intensive commercial use on that property. The, there you can see. That's our property right there with the NRC. Again, to the north is GC, to the south is our light industrial, self-storage for the, further south apartments around. But east and west of us is some R-twenty and some residential houses. So it's putting something in an area that's already got a lot of mixture of uses and making it work. The property most recently was a NAPA auto repair business. And this is the front that faces Old Concord Road. It has multiple bays around. And the conversation with adjacent property owners is they were glad to see light industrial use with a contractor's office come in rather than the car repair business because a car repair business was operating for six days a week, longer hours, and brought a lot of customers in and out. So the first thought is light industrial, ooh, it's more intensive than what was there before. And actually, it's not. What this is, is a contractor's office. They have ninety-five percent of the time, it's going to be an estimator and a staff person there, a receptionist. So normally, it's just two people there. They have, their equipment is on-site. They're a site grading company, so their equipment is on their job sites. The only time that equipment might come in here is for a day or two before it's sent back out. And they'll bring equipment here, and it's equipment that would fit in the building for maintenance, not for repair, but for maintenance, replacing, changing the oil and filters and things like that. Repair work is actually done on-site. So it would be some maintenance, and all that can be done in the existing building. So we, although the light industrial use kind of sounds more intensive, we're actually going to be a more compatible use with the residential than the previous business and the allowed uses there that are now. We have submitted a letter dated June twenty-fourth, and we have agreed to a lot of stipulations and conditions. And the, they all relate to making this a little more attractive appearance. Right now, along the road is a chain-link fence that runs right along the road, and it creates a rather unappealing streetscape. So we've agreed to install a chain-link fence. But further back behind, you see the blue line that's on this site plan. So the chain-link fence won't be running right along the road. It'll be further back. We do need the property fenced, and it will also allow us, right now, the gate is right up on the road. So if the gate is there and someone comes in, it could potentially block traffic. So the gate will be moved in, so there'll be ability for cars to come in, park, and open the gate. We've also agreed to adding a couple of landscape trees along the road to continue a streetscape there and some planting some bushes as shown on the green line there that would be in front of the fence. So it'll now, as you drive along Old Concord Road, after this is done, will have a more attractive appearance. In the back, we'll do the buffering adjacent to the residential property owners as depicted in the blue line. And we'll have a designated area, as I've shown right there, which is between us and the general commercial to the north. That would be for incidental outside storage. It would be screened with screening that we're going to be doing along, adjacent to the residential properties there. So with those conditions, I think, and G-dot, Cobb DXT had wanted us to fill in a gap of a sidewalk. We'll agree to that. Stormwater has requested that we divert stormwater that now flows through our parking lot straight to the road, divert it into a drop inlet that wasn't properly done before. We've agreed to do that. So your staff has reviewed this and recommends approval. And so we ask that you follow your staff recommendations and approve, subject to my letter dated June twenty-fourth. And with those conditions, I think this will be a good zoning. We have attended some of the public meetings, and I know there was one person that was interested when I sat down and explained to her what the proposal was. She, her concerns were gone, were addressed. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and considering there's no opposition, I will only talk for six minutes. Thank you.
You did good. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Just for the record, anyone in opposition to Z fifty-eight? Cannot seeing and hearing any. It's back to this board. This is Mr. Porter's. He's going to handle our discussion, please.
Thank you. And I do want to thank the applicant and Mr. Huff for coming out to some of our public meetings and meeting with the community because initially, there was some real opposition when they heard, oh, you want to put light industrial here and what's going on? And after we explained everything, or after they explained it, I don't know that I did, it really reduced the concern. And one of the things that I talked to Mr. Huff about is, instead of LI, going with an NRC zoning with an allowance for a contractor office and equipment maintenance so that we aren't quite making it as intense as LI that way in the future. If we had something else come in, it would come in as NRC, which is what the property is currently zoned for. So the contractor use would be for this applicant only, for their business only. We also talked about some hours of restriction that they, and this is farther, the applicant said they normally don't get there till seven-thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, and are gone by five. But we talked about seven AM to nine PM, just in case they have some equipment come in late, something like that, to give them some time. But we certainly, with residential directly across the street, don't want things being dropped off at midnight or five in the morning, things like that. So I think overall, in my opinion, this will be a less intense use than what the NAPA was. Of course, the NAPA wasn't complying with zoning with the type of work they were doing. They were running a body shop out of there as well as auto repair, which wouldn't have been allowed or shouldn't have been allowed. And that, so does anybody have any comments before I make a motion? Okay. Yeah. Make motion regarding Z fifty-eight to recommend deletion to NRC, subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Site plan received April second, two thousand and fifteen, with modifications stipulated herein. Contractor office and equipment maintenance use allowed for applicant's business only. Other NRC uses allowed for other businesses. The following NRC uses shall be prohibited. Pool halls, billiards in pool halls, and designated recycling collection locations. Hours of operation restricted, seven AM to nine PM. All stipulations in Parks, Huffs' letter dated June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, not otherwise in conflict with the following modifications. And on paragraph two, or bullet two, the second sentence, currently reads, "No more than three pieces of outdoor equipment will be located." We want it to be stored outdoors. We want to change that to "no equipment to be stored outdoors. All equipment to be stored indoors." In bullet three, it references where the chain-link fence is going to be moved to. And I just want to add to the end of it where it says, "Shown on Exhibit A," that it's the blue line to the front of buildings as indicated in Exhibit A. Paragraph four references trees and shrubbery to be added. I just want to, as shown in Exhibit A, I want to indicate, as indicated by the two blue circles, the trees and the green line in front of the buildings for the additional shrubbery. And landscape plan to be submitted for approval by county arborist and district commissioner. And then paragraph nine refers to the buffer. And I just want, I want to add, it already says approval by the county arborist, and I want to add to the end of that, "and district commissioner." Then the buffer is indicated by the blue lines to the rear of the buildings on Exhibit A. And paragraph ten refers to incidental storage. Like to add incidental storage to be screened from street and neighboring properties. And, let's see, I'd also like to recommend this for the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners. That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second from Skip. What is incidental storage?
They are going to be storing, they're a grading contractor, and they're going to be storing some pipes and things like that.
Okay, but you're going to screen them from view.
Right, and they have a defined area on the site plan for storing it, which is very limited.
All right, got you. Any other comments, questions?
I do have one comment. I think you said as part of that motion that they would be restricted to three pieces of equipment for maintenance being stored.
Actually, I was striking the three pieces stored outside, and that all equipment would be stored inside.
Oh, okay. And that's going to work with the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. Who seconded that? Skip seconded it. Okay, all in favor of the motion. Okay, that's approved five-zero. Thank you very much. We can, why don't we take a quick, it's almost ten-thirty, maybe come back at about twenty till, so we'll take a quick break here.
...or one, we would normally take a lunch break at 12 noon. I think we're going to try to avoid that if we can, and we'll just work straight through and see if we can knock this out so we can all go home. So that'll be our goal. John, what is next on the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Resoning case Z-65, Frank DeAres requests rezoning from R-30 to R-20 for the purpose of a residential subdivision in landlot 164 of the 1st District. The property is located on the north side of Timber Ridge Road, east of Shelbourne Ridge. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. And earlier, there were nine people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready, give us your name and go right ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Frank DeAres. I'm the applicant for the proposed zoning change on 5123 Timber Ridge Road. I guess the first thing I wanted to mention is, we currently live in this area, and our kids currently go to the same school system, and our intent is to build on one of these houses and live in there. So I think there might have been a little miscommunication about that. I guess I'm going to do a little different orthodox than these attorneys, these professional attorneys. I want to talk about the zoning, I mean, sorry, the staff recommendations. To be honest, you know, last Monday when I received this, I was a little perplexed on how it even came to a denial. So I guess I'd just like to go through some of the items and discuss them and give you my opinion about them. I guess the first thing was, the staff's opinion that the applicant's rezoning proposal may result in a use which is, which would cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing roads, transportation, facilities, utilities, or schools. This opinion could be supported by the departmental comments contained in this analysis. Now, as I went through this analysis, I don't really see any burdensome or existing issues here. I guess we can start out with the section where it's the schools. I mean, the school section was blank. I can tell you exactly what schools are because my children are in them right now. Mount Bethel's Elementary, Dickerson is the middle school, and Walton is the high school. So we're familiar with the area, and we want to stay in this area. So that was the reason we were sort of jumped on this property when we saw it up for sale. Fire comments, I mean, the only thing, I mean, it seems like we meet everything, other than add either a turnaround cul-de-sac or hammerhead, which we can easily do. It's not a problem. Hydrant requirements, we definitely meet that already. Comprehensive plan, we're already within the low-density zoning requirements, so we are good with that. Historical preservation, there's no historical significance in there. The water, there's water already existing on Timber Ridge Road. Sewer connections, there's a note here where Baldwin Terrace is a connector sewer. There's also sewers on Timber Ridge Road. That's right, you know, it's about 200 feet from the site. So we don't need to go through Baldwin Farms either. So it takes out the off-site existence or easement requirement for that. Stormwater management, we did submit a revised plan before our deadline should be, showing the dedication for the stormwater system or an underground system required there. So I think we meet all those requirements for that also. Unfortunately, I noticed you all received that yesterday, so that was a little late, but that should have been in the analysis. Recommendations from the transportation, this is donation of right-of-way on the north side of Timber Ridge Road, a minimum of 30 feet of the driveway center line. I mean, we can easily do that, that's part of a planning submission. And replacing the gutters and curbs and sidewalks, I mean, we can easily do that, too. So that's not really a concern. That should be a part of existing burdensome, excessive stuff. So that comes back to the final staff recommendations again. The biggest concern, it seems like, is the road frontage for three lots. And the concern here was the existing areas now currently either house frontages on Timber Ridge or subdivision road brought into the communities. Well, even though our community has that little road passes there, we were planning on dedicating, or not dedicating, but making a complete easement for driveway access in there, which, in my vision, when I created this site, was that in the future, when the siding parcels eventually, if eventually they do sell, that road can be the feeding road for that property. And I know it sounds a little weird, but I sort of created a little site layout to give you a vision of what it could possibly be there. And I'll show that in a few moments. So I guess that's my biggest disappointment, I guess, when I saw that denial. So I wasn't exactly sure how that was, because we sort of meet everything other than road frontage portion of it. And here's, and like I said, I know this will take probably many years down the road before that parcel gets sold or whatever it might be or developed, but here is a little site plan showing that our private road can turn into the existing road. So that would cut out the thoughts of it being different from existing areas, existing subdivisions, and never know. In regards to the road frontage, there is a couple parcel, one parcel within the last 60 days, 60 months, or 60 days, I should say, that was already approved for road frontage being less than 75 feet. And that is case number... I'm sorry, I don't have that here. Anyway. Also, road frontage, there's two parcels down for our property. The road frontage on that one parcel is less than 75 feet also. So again, that's sort of the same thing we're proposing to do. And I did submit in a stipulation letter yesterday, so I don't know if you all received that or not. I do have copies if you'd like to see that. I also went to the zoning department and checked for all the opposition letters, if there was any. And there was just one from, well, two, I should take that back. There's one just stating that there is a concern about homeowner association for the three lots. And there's also one from the East Cobb Civic Association, which I specifically talked to Marvin Shams about this. We discussed his concerns, and to be honest with you, when I received this letter, it's almost the opposite of what we discussed. So I'd like to go through that also. He mentioned about investment purposes. This is not an investment purpose, this is for personal use, like to build a house there along with a couple other friends that we have already want to build in, and they're already in this current same area, they'd like to stay in the same area, so that was He mentioned something about an easement going on with the Daltons on the property to the right of us. I guess when they first submitted a easement plot and agreement, driveway easement, there's a little flare-out that showed it on the plot, but not in the description. If we're approved, we're going to go from property line to property line as far as the driveway easements goes, and so that concern they have would basically go away. And I do have the attorney's documentation on all that information about what the litigation's going on for that, if you need to see that. I guess in the road frontage, we talked about the road frontage, so there's similar property already existing on the street that has less than 75 feet. Again, sewer availability, we talked about that, there's sewers on Timber Ridge Road, and he just stated here, there's no sewer in water. Talked about impervious road surfaces and how it would be drained on, so it wouldn't go into the adjacent properties. It would be paved and curbed, that private drive. And he also, one of the things was just more about screening of detention ponds, you know, we obviously would dedicate that and put up a six-foot wood fence, or whatever the county requires. Construction hours, it'll be just Monday through Saturday, basically 8:00 p.m. to 6:00, I'm sorry, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So I just wanted to just reiterate that this is more of a personal thing, not personal development, not than a investment. So that's pretty much everything I have right now. Take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Frank, very much. Whenever you're ready, just give us your name and go right ahead.
My name is Jim Dalton, and I own the property that surrounds the Z-65 property on the south and the west and the east sides. I have a list of petitions here of people that have opposed this Z-65. There's 79 names on it. I own the properties located at 5121 and 5125 Timber Ridge Road. We have over 1,240 feet of contiguous border surrounding the Z-65 property. I have never seen or spoken to the applicant, DeAres, and neither have my neighbors. I have lived at this location from the time I left the military, 43 years ago. My wife and I oppose rezoning request Z-65 for the following reasons. The Z-65 property owner McKay purchased the property from my father, who lives next door to us. The sales agreement indicated the purchaser wanted a legal R-30 zone lot. When the property was sold, the purchaser received one legal R-30 zone lot with the required 75 feet of road frontage for one house. Z-65 is asking for a variance to reduce the required road frontage by 66% to create three lots and would not meet code. This would set a precedent of bad land use on Timber Ridge Road and would should be denied. Z-65 does not fit the character of Timber Ridge Road community. Timber Ridge Road presently has a number of large acre-plus parcels with one house and the legally required frontage. When older homes have been torn down, and recently, the owners have built one replacement home on each lot. The correct road frontage has been maintained in every case. There is neither hardship issue nor any valid reason of any kind to support the reduction of road frontage on the Z-65 property. Z-65 proposes bad land use and would open the door to additional bad land use on Timber Ridge Road. Z-65 has allowed no lamp for the code-referred vehicle turnaround area, fire vehicle. There does not appear to be enough land on the required, for the required turnaround. Yet Z-65 is asking for reduced road frontage to increased density. Makes no sense. There is no public sewer available to Z-65 property without an easement, and stormwater runoff will require downstream easement as well for discharge. There is no sewer at this location on Timber Ridge Road, and Cobb County Water has no plans to extend sewer to this location. Z-65 calls for a private sewer maintained by the HOA. This is bad development approach and discouraged by Cobb County. Z-65 proposes a three-home mandatory homeowner association to maintain the sewer lines, a 500-foot-long driveway, and underground stormwater management system. Cobb County doesn't support underground stormwater management. It is very doubtful that a three-home homeowner association would be able to afford maintaining the infrastructure. Stormwater from the approximate 500-foot-long by 22-foot-wide driveway, 11,000 square feet of impervious surface, has nowhere to go except for my property. And that's because it sags in the middle as it goes from the property out to the street. Runoff from the driveway would damage my property and downstream neighbors as well. The Z-65 applicant has taken a legal R-30 zone lot that was originally sold for one house and is asking for rezoning to R-20 with multiple variances to create three lots that will deviate from the code requirements. The requested variances are not supported with a hardship issue, just a desire by the applicant to be exempt from the code requirements. The end result would be bad land use that does not fit the neighborhood. This bad land use would have a very negative impact on future neighborhood planning and development. My family's property and the quality of life that we have enjoyed for 43 years would also be negatively impacted. Please protect the Timber Ridge Road neighborhood from bad land use and out-of-character development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jill Flam, and I am representing ECCA on petition Z-65. ECCA agrees with the homeowners of Baldwin Farms, the Daltons, and the Cobb County staff in recommending denial of this petition. This lot was sold with exactly enough frontage for one home. It was never intended to be developed for a subdivision. According to code, 80,000 square feet is needed to develop three homes. The applicant only has 70,065 square feet. The applicant does not have enough land or frontage for this development. There is new development of R-30 and R-20 lots on Timber Ridge with no frontage variances required. Shown here are two new homes, 5205 Timber Ridge, zoned R-30, and now 5020 Timber Ridge, zoned R-20. Recently, there have been frontage variance requests on Timber Ridge, and these have all been denied by the BZA or withdrawn, preserving the frontage requirements in the area. The applicant has not presented a hardship for this variance, except that he is not able to do what he proposes with the land. In addition, there are no instances in this area where three homes will share a long driveway going between two homes in order to get to a public street. If approved, this could set a precedent for future development along Timber Ridge. While the applicant has issued a last-minute stipulation letter, he has failed to address the handling of stormwater from the driveway to Mr. Dalton's property, stormwater on Lot 3. If sewer easements have been acquired, all fire department comments, handling construction traffic, or any stipulations designed to lessen the impact of this development on the existing neighbors. Most important, though, there still is no explanation of the hardship requiring multiple variances on every lot. ECCA recommends denial of this petition. This development is not keeping with the character of the area, and by the sheer number of variances shows that this plan does not fit this lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flam. Next speaker, please.
Keith Guthrie, and I'm at 5180 Baldwin Terrace, and I'm representing the Baldwin Farms Homeowners Association. And staff's done a great job of putting the reasons together for denial, and the previous speakers have done the same. So in the interest of time, I just wanted to say we support the previous opposition to this for the reasons previously stated, and the neighborhood and the neighborhood board is fully opposed to this variance in rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'll just be very brief. My name is Dr. Paul Boyce. I actually live right next to the Daltons, to the very right of the whole R-30 zone. I didn't really plan to talk, and I only just really bought this property in November. Wasn't expecting to spend this much time at these board review meetings. Seen that it's had so many variance requests in the last few months, I'm a little surprised with all of that. But I think the one thing that really struck me from the applicant's discussion is his proposed, his proposed, I guess, what he sees in the future for that entire area, which just counted, was 14 homes. And when I originally bought the home, I had, in my mind, was not thinking that that was going to be the future of what was going to happen around my home. So I just wanted to really just support what the individual from Baldwin Farms and also my neighbors are really in, I mean, opposed to this entire variance request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to close the public comment portion. This is in District 3, and this will be handled by Ms. Trombetti. Kristy?
Okay, thank you. I guess I would like to start by saying we did receive a revised plan, Mr. DeAres mentioned that, and a stipulation letter, which is standard for especially residential or maybe all rezoning applications. Both came in kind of late. Well, the site plan, I think, was technically submitted last week. We just got a stipulation letter yesterday. And I think the idea that Mr. DeAres has, and I understand the thought process and wanting to live here and trying to allow for a way that the remainder of the property on either side of this easement could be developed as one unified subdivision in the future, I understand that that thought process, and I think it's, you know, a sincere gesture, I guess, as far as that is concerned. But the real issue, and the applicant even stated this, is the lack of road frontage, and that creates all the problems that are associated with the proposal. And one thing I want to say with regard to other areas or other recent approvals of reduced road frontage, I'm not sure exactly what cases he is referencing, but I think it might be variance cases, and this is a rezoning. So that's two completely different situations. Variances stand on their own, they're unique, and they don't set a precedent for one another. This is a zoning application, so we're being asked not only to consider going from R-30 to R-20, but combining that with the lack of road frontage for three lots. So it's not something that can be compared to any action that, I believe, the variance board is what he's referencing has taken lately. And then certainly, the variance requests that we've seen on Timber Ridge in the last several months have none have been approved or even made it to the point of being voted on finally. As far as the homes off of private easement are concerned, I think there are areas where we've seen it done well, and it works better when we're dealing with estate-sized lots, not, again, in conjunction with a rezoning, especially to R-20. We saw a really nice neighborhood this morning when we were talking about the case off Dallas Highway where all those large parcels shared the lake and all had private driveways. That's a good example of homes off of private easement. I think this situation with the rezoning, especially to R-20, again, deserves full public road frontage. And I think having a wider width and the ability to put in a public road would perhaps allow for future development to tie in. But the way it is right now and with the availability of space in that easement, it just, again, may be a good idea, but it just doesn't work. And as it's designed and with what we're dealing with today, I don't think it's a good idea. And I agree with the staff recommendation for denial. And I can make a motion unless there's some other comments.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, Kristy, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend denial of Z-65.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? So that is denied. Thank you very much. What's next, John? Thank you, folks.
Resoning case Z-68, Town Square MB1 LLC requests rezoning from LRC to NRC for the purpose of retail office and restaurant in landlots 275 and 296 of the 20th District. Their property is located at the southeast intersection of Kennesaw-Dewest Road. In Dewest Road, the applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-68? Let the director show there's no one opposed.
I think we're ready, Kevin. Go ahead.
Thank you, and good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owner and applicant in this application for rezoning. This property is located at the intersection of Kennesaw-Dewest and Dewest Roads in West Cobb. This property was developed and zoned about a decade ago at this location. It's a very nice shopping center that's located here in retail center. At this particular intersection, 10 years ago, there wasn't a lot of activity. This particular area in West Cobb had a convenience store that's located just down the street where Burnt Hickory came into Dewest Road, that has been there for many, many, many years, some small retail-type antique-type shops, car wash, dentist and orthopedic office, that type of thing. But since that time, this area has seen some real good quality growth. Quality retail has grown here. This property was zoned LRC or limited retail commercial. We don't see that very often at all, that limited retail category, when it was zoned 10 years ago. And there was a reason for that, was because the area was very limited in its retail growth at that point in time. But since that time, across the street, directly across Dewest from this property, you have a CVS, you have a large, much larger retail area zoned NRC at this point in time, and it's got some great coffee shops, Marriott Pizza located there, and you have abundance of neighborhood retail uses and shops in the area, all very befitting of the area and very consistent with neighborhood retail uses, as that term is defined in our ordinance. The issue with this property has been, is, like I said, it's been developed a decade ago, but over that 10 years of time, the limited retail commercial category is exactly what it says it is. It's very limited, and it's limited not only in its square footages that are maximums, but more importantly, in its list of permitted uses. The best example is, for this property, a dance studio, something that you would normally see in any retail shopping center, very common use, a very desired use for people in the area to take their kids to a dance studio, is not permitted in low-rise, I mean, limited retail commercial. It's not permitted. Eating and drinking establishments, a Marriott Pizza, a pizza place, not allowed in limited retail commercial. And what's happened is, through the years, we've struggled and gone over and over with the owner in terms of trying to find and locate the quality, highly-desired tenants for, retail tenants for this space, and he's done a good job with that, but there's been a constant struggle in interpretation and with staff as we've gone through tenant by tenant to try to see, does this fit, does this not fit? And ultimately, what's happened is, is this particular retail center is put at a disadvantage against its very adjacent retail neighbors because it is so limited. So the purpose of this application is, now that this area has grown into a very established quality driven to a neighborhood retail location, we decided to submit this application for rezoning to NRC. But it's really solely for the purpose of allowing those neighborhood retail uses that are desired, that people think would belong there anyway, and for that purpose only. What we're showing you is the, actually, the ASBILTS survey as part of the stipulation letter that was dated July 2nd. We have been discussing this application with kind of neighborhood area residents who have been supportive as long as we worked together on a list of prohibited uses. So rather than trying to come in here and zone it for special exception uses, which would be kind of a zoning by variance, we felt it was much better to come in and ask for NRC, because that's truly what this is, is a neighborhood retail commercial area note at this location now, but simply list what are normally permitted uses in NRC and list those as prohibited. And that list is fully set out, includes billiards and pool halls, convenience stores, self-service laundry facilities, pawn shops, tattoo parlors. One request, special request from the residents was a vape shop, so that's listed here as well. Title pawn businesses, payday, check cashing. One use that's not listed, I've received communication from one of the area residents last night, or yesterday afternoon, requesting that no grocery stores, that grocery store use be prohibited here as well. And this site, while it cannot, couldn't accommodate a grocery store regardless, we are willing to add a grocery store as a prohibited use here. We feel that, again, this is designed- We feel that, again, this is designed as neighborhood retail, that's what we're trying to do here, is have a neighborhood retail center that's competitive in the marketplace and one in which the quality highly-desired retail tenants that would want to be here and in which the residents would want to enjoy those services and retail amenities would want to be here as well. And we can add a grocery store as one of the prohibited uses to the extent it's ever redeveloped in the future or something happens in the future with it, then they'll have to just come back through a complete rezoning at that point in time, which we think would be appropriate. Also, as one of these stipulations is that it is being requested that it be zoned site plan specific to the ASBilt survey. Again, what we're trying to do is demonstrate that any future changes would have to come back through zoning, but that this is not a wolf in sheep's clothing. This is truly a center that's well-established, that's been done in a very quality manner. It's a great-looking retail center and we just need to make sure that it's covered with the same degree of, on equal footing and same degree of retail uses that are found in that area anyway. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and would respectfully request your recommendation to follow in line with staff's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just for the record, anyone opposed to Z-68? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, it's back to this board. I can't believe you're not going to have a vape shop, but nonetheless.
That was a specific request. I had to look it up what it was myself.
Okay. This is in District One, this will be Mr. Gunther's case, so go ahead, Skip.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. With the exception of the vape shop, my son says we need to have, no, I'm just kidding. I didn't even know what it was until last night I asked somebody. This is a, I think we basically have two choices in this. We can keep it zoned as-is and then entertain variance applications for things such as Shane's, which is a restaurant we all know, but it was positioned, I believe, as a deli.
That's right.
In order to get it in there, and everybody loves having Shane's right there.
Correct.
I guess that computer check is in there and she does, you know, she does great work for me and that's allowed. And I would hate to see that kind of thing not be allowed. But we have two choices. One is to keep it LRC and entertain land use permits to, for, you know, for variances. Or the other option is to move it up to NRC, which is exactly what it is across the street in this whole little area right there, and allow the additional uses with these exclusions. I just, for, you know, I can't see any reason not to, you know, any reason to deny this. I think it needs to be approved. So unless, unless there's discussion, I would make a motion that we approve it to the BO's, recommend approval to the BOC, subject to the letter stipulation dated July 2nd, 2015, received by the zoning division with the following additions and modifications. Item number two in your letter, I'll accept adding no grocery store. And then all staff's comments and recommendations. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Consent agenda.
And put it, and I would recommend we put this on the consent agenda, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? It's approved 5-0. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
No vape shop.
I would just add to that, that the reason that I, and I meant to say this, the reason that I think we ought to approve this with restrictions on the uses, it does nothing but improve the value of the property and it eliminates the need for Cobb County government to be involved, I think unnecessarily, in the future for variance applications. And so it's just, it's a win-win for everybody.
Right. Agreed.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. Res zoning case Z-69, take five oil change, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of light auto repair and landlot 595 to 16th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Piedmont Road and Sandy Plains Road. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-69? Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Whenever you're ready, just give us your name.
Russ Folsom. I'm the actual engineer for the project. We are proposing to put a take five oil change on this .34 acre project here. Their existing location, there's an abandoned gas station, tank's still on the ground, everything is still there, it's being operated as a car wash. Our proposal is to actually take the tanks out of the ground, remove the car wash. We're only going to disturb about 8,000 square feet on this site to put in what we need to do with the site. We're going to be reducing the impervious area by about 15% from what it is now. What we are asking for, we do need some variance relief. The site is very small to get our building in, but we only need, there's, the way this store operates, there's only four bays and there's one employee per bay and there's normally one manager. So we really only need five parking spaces. People do not get out of their cars. They pull in, get serviced, never get out of their car. So we're, it's a pretty low-impact development. Let's see here. That's basically it. There's not much to it other than just that. It's, we wanted to go in with the GC, obviously that zoning does not still exist, so we had to go to the NRC and met with staff to kind of get this thing worked in. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. Still any comments?
We may call you back up, so thank you very much. We did have, was it one or two opposed? We'll hear from the opposition now. Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Ron Ski and I own the property, both properties surrounding the subject property. And my problem is not so much about the zoning, but about the use. The fact is that, as the gentleman mentioned, it's a very, very small piece of property. And my contention, it is too small for the purpose they've described. It's way too busy, that is, the corner itself is way too busy. And there are really too many of these auto-related oil change things within 300 yards, there are three, and we don't need any more oil change situations on that corner. But as the picture suggests, he's got three bays of, four bays of operation and requires parking for six employees and doesn't have but six parking spaces, even though 18 would be required. The problem, as the gentleman suggested, is that it's being, it's an abandoned gas station that's being used as a car wash right now. And we're required to police the limited lots on both sides of it for both employees and finished autos. You know, we're trying to keep them off our lots, there just is no place to park. And they've got no parking places planned for any of the customers when their oil change is done. They have barely enough for the employees themselves. As those squiggly yellow lines suggest, it's a very, very busy corner. We have schools, Sperry High School right across the street, and all the kids who come across on those walkways, we have a turn right, it's a very tight turn right, people looking to the left as a turn right, and we have a U-turn there as the kids come across. And we've got proposed people, cars, many of them, five minutes, every five minutes you'll have them coming out, you know, coming out of that entrance or exit or whatever it's called over here on Piedmont Road. So to begin with, the question of size, if you look at the, I'll put my finger up here. I was required, I'm sorry? Okay. I was required.
Need to use the microphone, sir.
Thank you.
There you go.
I was required to use a 50.
Need to hold that up so we can.
I was required to use a 50-foot setback to establish the location of the buildings both on Sandy Plains and Piedmont Road. These are major roads with dividers and a lot of traffic. And if you put 50 feet, you know, both directions from Piedmont and Sandy Plains, there's really no room for this building at all. Here's a setback, if I can find my finger, right in here. There's really no room for this building. Aside from the traffic issue, you know, the setbacks themselves should be reason enough not to allow the building and the use of the building. It says somewhere on the thing that this thing is allowed to be 50 feet high. I don't know how tall they propose it, but that's what it says on the, on this document that was sent. The major setbacks on both roads require variances, although they've identified a variance requirement only on one. They're looking for what they call a 35 to be reduced to 25, and the other they don't mention at all. So I'm not sure what the rules are concerning setbacks for this particular property. I have no doubt that the county would be very interested in reducing the GC zoning to almost anything that's not GC. So as I say, I have no objection except, and I don't know what NRC setbacks require. But as I say, I was required to use 50 feet in, on both roads. A parking variance was suggested to allow for the use, this use. A parking variance to no parking available. In other words, I'm not sure what they plan to do with these cars, except park them in a 50-foot-high parking garage above. I have no idea, but the fact is that they, they're asking for a variance, they're not reducing the number of, you know, there's no reasonable number, it's just zero. They've got room for six and they've got six employees and they've got no parking for any of the customers. The, we talked about the too small, we talked a little bit about the too busy. That is, with all of the activity that's going on in the street, we're just begging for problems with either the kids coming across the road or other traffic making a right-hand turn on a red light, which is what they're allowed to do, or somebody making a U-turn. They're all looking the wrong direction, they're all pointing at that entrance and somebody is going to step out there and we're going to have a problem. You know, we were, we were told, because at one time I was interested in the property myself, although economics these past 10 years haven't allowed us to consider any purchases of property. But when I was discussing it, we were told that if, if I were to purchase that property, clearly the tanks would have to be removed, clearly the drainage from a totally impervious property. And gentleman before says he's improving it, but he's still not making, you know, the minimum. In other words, even with his planned little green areas, he hasn't met the minimum requirement for impervious. He's got more impervious roof and parking lot than would be required. But the point I was trying to make, I guess, was that the tanks have to be removed, that the groundwater has to be captured in some underground system. And those were the, and the third requirement was because of the busyness there, we couldn't have an entrance on Piedmont Road, that would be eliminated. And my suggestion is almost no matter what use you make of this, that you do eliminate an entrance on Piedmont Road because we're pointing kids at that point, we've got cars going both directions and having another influence of cars coming out of that little parking area that they show would create problems. I don't see anything about a monument sign here, and nobody's talked about signs, but the sign that's there existing is outside their property line and outside the requirement for pushing the sign back. I'm not sure what it is, but right now it's a low monument sign and it's based on its original place when it was a jet gas station 30 years ago, and I've been there 30 years. My family business, in case nobody knows, has been there for 30 years.
Hey, Ron, you're almost out of time. Can you summarize it for us?
Yes. Again, bottom line, have no idea why NRC wouldn't be an appropriate zoning. My concern is the property is way too small, the corner is way too busy, and there are already too many of this type of business. So my objection is to the use of the thing in the business that's planning on going there. Thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I believe that was the only opposition person that spoke up, so we'll go ahead and close that portion of the hearing. This is in District Three, that'll be handled by Ms. Trombetti. So Kristi, lead our discussion.
Okay, thank you. At our work session last week, we talked a little bit about the variances and I said that I felt like this was too much on a small piece of property. And let me ask, I'm sorry, if the applicant's representative could come back and let me ask you a couple of questions. I recognize that it's under half an acre and take five is a corporate store, I guess. So is there any flexibility in terms of the size of the building?
A lot of that's driven by the market and the cost of the property. There is a three-bay unit building that they do have. They haven't done any in Georgia, those have mainly been in the very rural areas, but they do have a three-bay unit.
Okay. That was one of the concerns. And then I had not thought of this before, but Mr. Ski and just mentioned it, the signage. Any proposed signage? Where would that be located and what type has it been?
I don't know that they would need a monument sign. They have a sign on their building and that usually takes care of it.
Okay.
I haven't heard him say anything about the signage.
Okay. Let me make sure I don't have any other questions for you. And then the parking, you mentioned at any given time, there are usually four employees working and one manager, so that's five.
Right.
Parking spaces. You've provided seven. And then is it 100% the customers are driving in and out and never?
100%.
Parking their cars?
Yeah. There's no customer lounge, there's no getting out of the car for anything.
Okay. And about how many customers per day would you expect a store like this to handle?
Oh, that's a hard one for me. It's a five-minute, that's the whole thing in the store. It's a take-five oil change, so it's a quick in, quick out. I don't have the numbers.
So they're open 12 hours?
Monday through Friday, I think it's seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
I think that's right. And limited hours on the weekend. There's not a lot of data for how they do in Georgia. This is, I think, only the second store maybe that they're doing in Georgia. They're based out of Louisiana.
Okay. So that's like 144 customers a day per bay?
I doubt they would get quite that.
Right. But that's what it could be.
They would be great if they could.
I mean, five, every five minutes. Okay.
It wouldn't be that much. No, there's no way it would be that.
But that's the number, is all I'm saying. There's four bays, cars in and out technically or possibly all day long. So those are my only questions for you, but there may be others. Do you have?
Go ahead, Skip.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's like 144 customers a day per bay?
I doubt they would get quite that.
Right. But that's what it could be.
They would be great if they could.
Five, every five minutes. Okay.
No, it wouldn't be that much. No, there's no way it would be that.
But that's the number, is all I'm saying. There's four bays, cars in and out, technically, or possibly all day long. So those are my only questions for you, but there may be others. Do you have?
Go ahead, Skip.
Yeah, just a couple of queries. Is this a franchise?
It is.
Yeah, okay. And so somebody's buying this, and there are different businesses?
I'm sorry, no, it's, it's not a franchise. The Take 5 oil change folks will own this. They own this.
Okay. But you do have different business models with different structures. You said a three-bay, a four-bay, probably a larger one.
I think they may even have a five-bay.
Yeah. And so they've sized this, I would assume, based on what they see the demographics of the area being and the traffic on these two roads. And I mean, it's a great location for visibility, that's for sure.
Yes, sir. That's right.
And I just want to make sure that I understand, the entrance to this is, well, we're looking at a picture now, the entrance to this would be where the entrance currently is for the gas station.
That's right.
On, on Sandy Plains Road. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
That would be the exit also?
Yes, sir. And both locations would have to be a right-in, right-out.
Yeah, so people would come in there, they would come around, drive to the back, queue up if they need to, go into a bay, be served, pay, and then they would leave out of the same entrance that they, they would exit from the same area that they entered. Is that right?
One of the two, yes.
There's two.
I've got the.
There is another one?
Yeah.
If y'all would like to see who it is.
Okay, so they could exit there, too. Okay, so they could drive. They could do a circle or something. Better be right-in, right-out. Okay.
Going to show this, this is the existing survey.
With, with something like this, in your wildest dreams, you would, you would hope for somebody every five minutes for each bay, but you'd probably come nowhere near that.
It's nowhere close to that.
Yeah, yeah. You have any idea what you would need to generate in order to make it work financially?
I don't have all the numbers from.
It's probably much, much less than that, though.
Yes, by far. I know a lot of these things, you use the traffic, the ITE, the traffic generation projections. I want to say it's like five units of traffic per bay, per day.
Yeah.
It's something like that. So it's, it's nowhere near.
So that would, that would be, you know, maybe on the lower end of what I would think, but somewhere in that kind of vicinity. Okay. Those are the questions I have.
I had one, one question. On the web, I looked on the internet, and I find that what they offer, and you tell me if this is what's to be offered there, is not only oil changes and oil filters, but they also will put on a fresh set of wipers if you need it. You going to do that?
Absolutely.
Change transmission fluids if you need it.
Right.
That sort of thing. So all that. If somebody wanted all of that, you're still saying they don't drop their car off?
They do not drop the car off.
They stay in the car, and all that's done in just a few minutes, and they're in and out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Kristi?
Okay, thanks. Again, I understand the staff's recommendation, recommendation for approval, and the concerns that I had expressed last week with the intensity and the size are still there. I think some of the points that Mr. Ski had made should be taken into consideration. This is a highly pedestrian area, and if you don't, and if you've never driven into some of the businesses, especially the property to the north, that new shopping center or newer shopping center, it's one of the best-looking ones on the street, access in that entire area is difficult. Getting in and out of that property, getting in and out of the Chick-fil-A now is problematic. And then with all of the students from Sprayberry that walk throughout the day, it's, it's a really complicated intersection as it is. And I feel like while the NRC zoning is, is absolutely appropriate, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with a car-oriented use in this location. I think the variances are something else that kind of speak to the intensity. Every variance that's been requested, out of necessity, I understand, but every variance is 50% or, or less of the standard. They can only, I mean, they can't even really get close to meeting the standards that would be required for this. So I think that should be a major red flag for us. The setbacks, less than 50%. The parking, less than 50%. The lot size, everything. We have some other difficult sites like this nearby and in other nodes in District 3 where properties were developed 30, 40 years ago even, and roadways have changed, and the market has moved here and there. And I think the best thing for us to do is to be patient and wait until we get the right use. So I'm not going to be able to support this, this use today, and I'd like to make a motion that we recommend denial of Z-69.
Okay. Do we have a second? I have a second from Mr. Porter. Any further discussion? If you were in the middle of a, rather than at an intersection, if you were in the middle of the road somewhere, middle of a, you know, area, I think we'd be, be all over this, because we'd love to have you in this area. I think the neighbors would love to have you in this area. But this is a, I went out there and sat, and I watched for probably 15 or 20 minutes recently. It is a very busy intersection.
It is busy.
And you do have the school right across the street. And all the points made by Ron, I think, were, were dead on right, and Kristi's summary is dead on right. So unfortunately, I think we need to find another site. That's, that's my comment. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just add kind of a contrary perspective to that, that something needs to happen in that corner. And, and this seems to me to be a less intense potentially use of that corner than even the gas station was when it was there, based on how I believe it's probably going to work. So I would think that, you know, I guess I take a different perspective, but I think this may be a good use for that corner.
Well, through a comment, you know, I think the, because I'm piggybacking on what he says, then Kristi can do that. I think it's just too big. I think if it was maybe a two-bay, and you could reduce the variance added for the setback so that it's not so far up, because I hate to see a building pushed that close to the street when we have so much traffic right there. And then you could provide proper parking if you drop two bays, those kind of things. Also, you know, the, we don't have any elevations, we don't know about signs or anything else, so there's nothing here that we could support, I don't think. Because, one, we don't have enough information, and, two, it has way too many variances and that. So I don't totally close the door on this type application there, but this is just too big and intense.
Kristi?
Okay. Just to follow up again on the use, there are other car-oriented uses very close by, and District 3 is not lacking for somewhere to get your car looked at or whatever. I think this is a good, you know, possibly a good business, would fit somewhere. This location is not the right use, and we are working on redevelopment now. So we've got many other areas, Tricam Road and Shalaford, other parts of Sandy Plains, where properties need to be redeveloped. And I don't think we should be so quick just to take something that's brand-new and, and could be a short-term improvement. So that's, again, my rationale for not supporting this one.
And when the service station was there, that was a very long time ago. I think traffic has increased dramatically since then, and it's pretty obvious when you go out there and take a look at it, it's a very heavily congested area. So I tend to support Kristi in this. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion. Who seconded? I didn't catch it. Gault seconded, so all in favor of the motion to deny. All opposed? We have one opposed, Mr. Gunther. Okay, good luck. You still have to come before the Board of Commissioners if you want to downsize it a bit and make your pitch to them. You can see what happens there. Okay, thank you very much. John, what's next?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Resoning case Z-17, Erock Development LLC, request rezoning from R-30 to R-15 for the purpose of single-family residential in Land Lot 28 of the 1st District. The property is located on the northwesterly side of Childers Road, south of Monet Drive. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-17? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Kevin, are you the man of the hour again? Come on up. I think we've heard of this one before, haven't we?
Yes, this is a held case, so it was, it was heard. And the direction we were given by the Planning Commission was to look at revising the layout to adjust where that driveway was, or drive, or drive, where the street intersection was, was occurring. Look at how the lots were being presented to and engaging with Childers Road. And there was an overall concern with the layout that this just did not, wasn't compatible or consistent with development and existing uses along Childers Road, for us to take a look at that. Unfortunately, we're not able to revise that plan, and so the plan and proposed zoning is still the same as was presented the last time. We understand that that's not what was directed by the Planning Commission, but hope you understand this, that that's not been able to been done, to be completed or changed at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We had no one in opposition here, so it's back to this board again. This is Ms. Trombetti's. Kristi?
Okay, thank you. I think the reason that there's no opposition here is that they've been coming for five months now. This is Z-17, and all the other cases that we've been talking about today are in the '60s, pretty much. So that lets you know how long we've been dragging this one out. We know what the issues are. Stormwater is, is really the primary issue. I think access and site distance is another issue, but really the extreme stormwater problems that exist already in Tiffany Place, some of the things that the applicant had talked with the chimney lakes homeowners about are known, and I think we have a STIP letter even from a few months ago that talks about some of that. So I think that's why they're not here today. We know what the issues are, and they are hopeful that, that this can move on, maybe to the board, with some kind of recommendation that will at least keep the process going and put some kind of finality to this. The more I look at it, I don't think R-15 is the right assignment for this property. From this point on Childers, all the way down to Shalaford, every other property that accesses Childers Road is an estate-sized lot, or the R-20 lots actually, both have driveways on Childers, they have nice setbacks. There's a certain look and feel from Shalaford all the way up to the point where Tiffany Place or Coventry Green on the other side of the road subdivision entrances are. So this piece of property is kind of stuck in the middle of two, what I would consider estate-type developments. Kind of cramming this number of homes in here doesn't make sense. I'm not sure R-20 would even make sense, and we haven't seen a site plan that would show us that option. I don't really see why this couldn't be developed very nicely as an R-30 neighborhood and maintain the aesthetic that exists already in that section of the, of the road. I do have a question, though, for Mr. Peterson. And this is something that, that we talked about earlier, is the idea of bringing in the homeowner with the private driveway adjacent, at least enough that, that would no longer be a conflict. If property were added to this application at this point, would it need to be re-advertised as a new case, or what's the procedure?
It would have to be re-advertised with the, the next title holder. I guess that property right to the south we're talking about, that larger lot. So we would have to hold that at a staff level to re-advertize it correctly with that title holder in the advertisement.
Okay. But it wouldn't have to be a new case?
That's right.
Okay. So if we, and I'm looking at options, and I'm looking for input, actually, because I don't mind holding this forever, right here, until we get a plan that we like. But I, I do mind the neighbors having to come back every month and sit here, and nothing has happened. So I'm torn between recommending denial, which is what I think would be a fair recommendation, and sending it to the board, and then just holding it here again. Yeah, I don't know, but I.
I think it's pretty clear that this, this applicant, Erock Development, is not going to alter their plan. I mean, we were hoping, and I think we sent the message over and over again, we wanted to see a plan either R-30 or R-20. They never came forward with it, and today you're telling us we still don't have a plan to look at.
That's right. If I could draw it, I would.
That speaks volumes to me.
I'm not qualified.
Well.
Okay. I was just going to say, I would, I would say we've held this, what, maybe three or four months with no real changes. So I don't see the point in continuing to hold it, because the applicant's not doing anything to, to make it something that we'd want to move forward, you know, with any type of recommendation for approval, so.
Yeah, we don't typically like to send cases to the BOC unless we've done all that we can and tried to, to vet it and make the suggestions that would make it a good plan for the neighbors and for the applicant. In this case, though, I think we're beating a dead horse. I think we're not going to get any more than what we have, and I think we need to send it on through one way or the other, up or down.
Well, I will make a motion then. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I agree with those sentiments.
Like I said, I think a better site plan for this would be maybe even an R-20, but something that incorporates setbacks and positioning similar to the homes that are adjacent and also off Childers Road. It doesn't make sense, the way this property is shaped, to create a subdivision that doesn't fit in with the adjoining neighbors on Childers, because that's who you see. It's okay to line up with Tiffany Place, but that's not really what you see when you're driving up and down the street. So I just want to make sure that that comment is clear and in the notes somewhere, because obviously, we're not going to have a chance to have any other input on this. I'm going to make a recommendation that we, or a motion that we recommend denial of Z-17.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussions? Not seeing and hearing any, let's go ahead and call for the vote. So that is denied, 5-0. Thank you, Kevin. John, what's next, please?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to hear case Z-61 and SLEP 6 together, since they're, okay, I'll call them together then.
Yes, please.
Resoning case Z-61, Blair's Bridge Storage LLC, request rezoning from PVC to LI for the purpose of a self-storage facility in Land Lots 518 and 519 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northerly side of Blair's Bridge Road, north of Y-20. Also, SLUP 6, Blair's Bridge Storage LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a self-storage facility in Land Lots 518 and 519 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northerly side of Blair's Bridge Road, north of Y-20. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-61 or SLEP 6? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Mr. Moore, how are you?
I'm, I'm last.
Yes, sir.
That's how I am.
Go right ahead, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. For the record, my name is John Moore, and I'm here representing the applicant in this case, Blair's Bridge Storage LLC. Mr. Seamus Burke is here with me, who is the principal of that company and has been a longtime builder of self-storage, and owner of self-storage facilities. This case was held from our last, your last meeting, and just to bring us back to where we were, this, remind everybody, this piece is, is divided, part of it in Cobb and part in Douglas County. There are 2.19 acres in Cobb County, and three acres in Douglas County. This is north Blair's Bridge. This is north Blair's Bridge Road here. Thornton Road is over on this, right here, over this way. And this runs off of that to here. This line through here, you see, is the county dividing line. This portion is Douglas County. The northeast portion is Cobb County. You will remember, this is Walton Reserve, which is a large development that was zoned several years ago. This five acres was left and attempted to be designated as medical office buildings. However, it's been for sale since that, since the early 2000s, and we have no interest. They were looking for something, these Walton Reserve owners were looking for something compatible, and they feel this self-storage facility is the compatible use for them because of the low-intensity use it had. From our meeting the last time, the concern, this is a site plan from that meeting. I'm sorry, I had it backwards. This is a site plan from that first meeting. We had all the storage buildings on the Douglas County portion. We have a three-story climate control and then one-story drive-up self-storage. But all of it was in the Douglas County. We had parking only in the Cobb County portion. If you remember, that was for work vehicles. So people who work and could not park their trucks in a subdivision or apartment complex would have a place to park them, like heat and air plumbers and the like that have that writing on the trucks. So the direction that we received from you was to go back, take a look at taking out that parking and putting some of the storage on the Cobb County side and remove that parking because you were concerned about the time of people coming, going, hanging around out there and so forth. So we did that. For, at least for a change, we listened. And this is, this is the new site plan. The three-story climate control building is now still on the Douglas County piece because it fronts the road. However, we have the single-story, all-brick, one-story self-storage on the Cobb County piece, and it forms a barrier or a border. And then we have parking interiorly. But this parking is only, it's reduced in number, and it is only for boats and RVs. In other words, which people just come and go occasionally. There's not any, all day, no gathering out there, no anything. This is a secured facility. It's gated, requiring access. But it forms a barrier, and you'll see there's a 30-foot buffer here that we left, natural, adjacent to Walton Reserve as well. And then you have this brick rear on this property serving as a wall or a fence. Then it's fenced all the way around, all around here. And then on this frontage, we have wrought iron-type fencing. And what I want to show you is a rendering. This is a rendering of what the three-story climate control building will look like, is what you see prominently in the foreground. Very attractive building. And you see, we don't see in this picture, but there's landscaping and wrought iron fencing. You'll see this building here is what the single-story buildings will look like. They're all brick, solid brick in the back, no windows, no doors, no anything. So it's plain. But obviously, very attractive building and will be an asset. If you remember, across the street from this to the southeast is an older motel. To the west of it is a back of a shopping center and the back of a car dealership. And then directly south of it's additionally, the back of additional commercial. So if you drive down into this area, you clearly see that this will be a tremendous upgrade as far as facilities go, as far as appearance of any building down there goes. This is, we think, something that does not cause a lot of traffic, a lot of people coming to and from, but will stand, because of its proximity to interstate, is why this is an attractive location. And I think the question we posed the last time is the same one we posed today. And that is, if you don't use it for this, what do you use it for? Nope, you can't see this property from Thornton Road. So no retail is going to go behind here. The retail that's out on Thornton Road is, blocks that and is not totally full itself. So I think, given this location closer to the interstate, this application is totally appropriate and will be a successful application and one that hopefully will make the motel across the road. If you've been out there and looked at that, upgrade itself and hopefully upgrade the entire area. We don't see anything but a positive benefit from having this located there. As I said, this is both in Cobb and Douglas, so it requires approval, your approval, Cobb County's approval and Douglas. And we filed in Douglas. They don't have hearings every month, so you have to file. We filed for a hearing in August in Douglas County. So obviously predicated on getting approval here as far as the total plan goes. I mean, we could still go forward with the one in Douglas County without Cobb if it came down to that. But hopefully it doesn't, because I think it looks much better and presents much better the way it is. So we would ask, excuse me, we would ask for your consideration of what we're proposing. We think that it does provide a use that's needed in the area and one that can do very well financially in the area without the degree of coming and going that a lot of retail and other things would bring. We certainly are ready to answer any questions that you might have about this and hope that you would recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just for the record, anyone in opposition to Z-61? And what is the SLEP? SLEP-6? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, it's back to this board. And that would be Mr. Porter. Gaunt?
Thank you. I took a look at this in a little bit more detail even since our last meeting. And one of the things that's important to note on this, one is that it's in a neighborhood activity center. So the land use plan doesn't support self-storage. But also, more importantly than that, this property was part of a PVC zoning, which is a planned village community. And there's some very unique factors to planned village community because it's, right from the code, it says it's a district established to provide locations and encourage flexible site plans and building arrangements under a unified plan of development rather than a lot-by-lot regulation for retail, commercial, and service uses which are designated and oriented to self-sufficient neighborhoods making up a community. So one of the issues with this is, this is the only commercial piece of that whole PVC. So if we pull this out of there, you have apartments, 355 apartments and 50, potentially 50 homes. Only 15 homes have been sold so far in there. But, you know, so you no longer have a commercial, you no longer have a PVC. It doesn't even fit the definition if we try and pull that out. But looking at some other things, the county ordinance says the entire PVC shall be included within private deed covenants running with the land to ensure that the continuance of the PVC in accordance with the approved plans and development. Goes on to say, "All the land in the PVC shall be owned initially by an individual corporation or partnership or other legal entity. Individual properties in the PVC may be sold after, after final plat has been duly recorded with the property subject to deed, private deed covenants that shall ensure the continuance of PVC as originally approved." So to me, it says, this property needs to stay PVC. And without, and if it has a private restrictions, as I understand them, and I'm not an attorney, but you would have to have the approval of every landowner to remove a private deed restriction. Everybody who's subject to part of this PVC. So from that standpoint, I don't think it makes any sense. And just from a more global, you don't have a planned village if you don't have any commercial in here. So if we pull this out and it's no longer PVC, what we have is apartments and a few houses. So, you know, I don't see any way that this zoning could be approved. And self-storage is not a allowable use within PVC. So it's not as though they're coming back saying, "We can't develop the medical office. Let us develop retail," or "Let us develop some other use that's allowed within PVC." So, you know, from my perspective, there's, you know, this just doesn't fit, and it doesn't fit with the zoning that they already submitted the land to. And, you know, I also think, you know, the, I don't know that the developer's done everything he could to develop this land. You know, when I look at zoning that was done in 2001, and they were to have 50, you know, residents sold, it was a combination of townhouse and, and single-family. And in 14 years since then, they've sold 15 of them. You know, through the biggest building boom that Atlanta's ever seen. And I also think it's kind of clear that, you know, if, that a multifamily zoning wasn't something that interested the county at the time they did this. And we didn't, we really didn't need another 355 units along a corridor. This is Six Flags Drive corridor, which is known in the county for being one of the most multifamily intense corridors. Oak Ridge Road is essentially Six Flags Drive. It just changes names down another couple hundred feet from this development to Six Flags Drive. And we have thousands of apartment units along there. So I don't really think we really needed apartments. So obviously, there was a deal struck to do a mixed-use development. And, and I think it's something the developer should do, is continue and finish the mixed-use development. Anybody have any comments before I make a motion?
I do. First of all, times have changed since this development started. We did have a recession. And by your own comments, the units in the PVC have not been selling. You know, it's not, you have adjacent to it, you have the retirement facility. And going down and looking at this site, I don't think anyone would ever build a office medical building. I don't think there's a need for an office medical building. And that's probably what's occurred over the years, is nobody would go to it. I think this is one, an opportunity to, with the self-storage doing, he came back and did exactly what we suggested, was to put some, the storage on that lot and protect it from the amount of cars or parking that would be there. I think it would be appropriate use. It's a nice-looking building, it would give a tax space. But I don't ever see this being a medical office facility. And I don't know that by zoning it, it's going to mess up the PVC. The PVC would still stand on its own merits. This would be just a parcel out of it. It wouldn't mess up the PVC. It might be in a question for our attorney, but I don't know how it would mess up a PVC by selling off a parcel.
Well, is the PVC a zoning designation or a deed restriction?
It's a zoning designation that requires a deed restriction. The code requires them to put deed restrictions on the property, per the ordinance. Once it's zone PVC, they have to put in the deed restrictions.
I think the...
It's going to be dependent on how that deed restriction is worded.
And I think John Moore, being the attorney that handled it, John probably could explain it to us.
PVC in Cobb County is very seldom used because it requires more than 50 acres. There aren't maybe four in Cobb County totally. They're all site plan-specific. West Village at 285 and Atlanta Road is a PVC. No deed covenants. It's all done site plan-specific. It requires everything, all the commercial to be in the middle. This wasn't in the middle. So all the PVCs that have been approved in Cobb so far have been all site plan-specific zonings, no covenants recorded on any of them. There weren't any covenants recorded on this one either. So because the site plan-specific section of the Cobb County code acts as a contemporaneous variance to code requirements that you have, that you do every day. So once it's zone site plan-specific, it means anything contrary to that that is varied by the site plan-specific, just like West Village was and the other couple that are out here. I'm trying to think where the other ones are, but I think there's another one someplace. John may know, but I'm not sure.
There are a couple PVCs, there's not many. You got this one, you got Ridanour, I think, Town Village. I think it'd be a solid one too.
Ridanour has been violated so many times, if that was...
Well, and the best part of Ridanour was annexed into the city.
Into the city. But, you know, they sold off parcels, is what I'm getting at. Ridanour did. And this, this would not have any effect, according to what I'm hearing, by zoning this for issues on the existing PVC, to hold a parcel of land hostage, saying in all these years that we're going to wait another 15 years and see if we can get a medical building. I don't think that's fair.
Well, let's, it absolutely is fair for two reasons. One is, the applicant agreed to do it when they brought in the whole property. Two, this applicant's known as a multifamily developer. And they wanted multifamily. And their trade-off was to provide a medical village and provide some services in here so that it was a planned village. And they haven't done it. And it's the economic use of the whole property, not just one thing. And the other thing is, the code specifically says this will be site plan-specific, and that has nothing to do with the requirement of deed restrictions. Code says it will be site plan-specific, and it also says they have to put in the deed, private deed covenants to it. So if they haven't done it, they're in violation once again. But, you know, that's not a reason to let them pull out a piece of land. You know, and, and it would make it because there's no PVC without some type of commercial in it. It's strictly a residential development.
And that's why it would remain, PVC. It would, John, it...
It wouldn't be a PVC because it wouldn't fit the definition of a PVC.
It would be, it would be zoned PVC.
It may be zoned it, but it wouldn't fit the definition if you let them pull this out.
And I'm saying that it would. I mean, we wouldn't take away the classification of PVC just because they're zoning a parcel out of it.
If they take this parcel out, they still have the minimum acreage to keep this a PVC.
Correct. So nothing has really changed.
But it doesn't provide the mixed use that's required per PVC. It's strictly a residential development at that point.
Walton Properties, which is Barry Teague. Barry Teague is known, as John said, as Judy said, that's what he's known for doing, and that is residential development, condos, townhomes, apartments, that sort of thing. He proposed a medical office for this a long time ago. That's not feasible for this site. He's also not going to expand his residential area into this site, or he would have already done that. What better use than a low-impact proposal that they have here before us today? I just, I think it fits.
I think here's the point I have, is that he wouldn't have ever got this zoning without the promise to do these things. He wouldn't have put 355 more apartment units in an area where we have thousands of units. And I really think it's predatory on the, on the area not to brought in these services that were promised to get this zoning. You know, it could go right to what the Supreme Court ruled on, you know, a week or so ago on the fair housing. Because it is discriminatory to bring in a whole bunch of apartments, especially when they're lower-income subsidized kind of apartments.
And so what would you put there, though? You're not, you're never going to see a CVS or a grocery store?
And you're never going to see an emergency...
We desperately need medical services in this part of the county. That's probably why it was put there, is medical.
If it was desperate, you'd already had it building down there 10 years ago.
You know, and my point is...
Doctors are like lawyers. They're going to go where there's a place and somebody wants them.
Right, and if they had put it, they'd probably have it filled.
No offense, John.
But the, the residential, if you can't sell 50 houses between 2001 and 2007, before the crash, you weren't trying to sell 50 houses. You know, there were hundreds of houses built along Six Flags Drive during that time. There's subdivision after subdivision that was developed. You know, they, they managed to build 355 apartment units in two years. Couldn't build 50 houses in the last... Couldn't build 50 houses in the last 14 years. I mean, I know the last few years have been bad, but the years before was, the years 2001, 2007 was a boom.
It's all about location.
They had, just down the street, there's all kinds of subdivisions.
Taking this parcel of land out is not going to kill the rest of the PBC.
It does, because there is no PBC. There's no commercial then.
There is a PBC. We just heard that it is a PBC.
There's no commercial. You're required to have some commercial component.
Not when you've taken a parcel out. And it is a commercial, it's a non-residential.
And you can't pull a parcel out because-
Storage buildings are non-residential. That is a commercial component.
It's contrary to the code to pull out a parcel. That's why they put these deed restrictions and said right in it that the intent was that you can't pull out parcels. That, you know, the, you know, it says right in the code, "All land in the PBC shall be owned and, and subject to it." You know, that was very intentional so that you couldn't pull out parcels later. And now we have this prob, and then on top of it, even if you pull it out, self-storage doesn't fit the land use plan. And I don't, and we have tons of properties within a very small radius of this, within a mile, that do fit the land use plan that they can build their self-storage. So there's no reason to put self-storage here. It makes no sense.
Just a comment. For that part that would remain, the PBC part where I guess they have, what do you say, 15 houses that they've built in 14 years? Would this, if, if what you're saying is correct, would it make sense to take this entire parcel and, and, you know, take this application and rebuild it into the entire parcel and change the designation PBC for that northern piece there? And then look at it that way with a plan for the whole thing? Because-
Can't do that today.
No, I know we can't.
That's not what's before us today.
Well, it could be denied and then ask the applicant to go back and, and do that. Because what I'm concerned about is we've got a big piece of land right there. I don't know how many acres that is.
Two acres.
Okay, two. That has been only partially built out over the last 14, 15 years. And, you know, what's going on? Do we, do we, you, we need to, somebody needs to do something to kind of, you know, get this back on track. And, and, and just to sort of get hung up on the verbiage and the, the legal language and everything else is, that's not constructive. We need to be constructive about something.
Oh, and the legal language is-
Well, I'm not, yeah. So maybe we need to just deny it, recommend denial, and then ask for it to be repositioned and reapplied for in a different form with an overall plan for the entire property.
Yeah. And as I said, I wouldn't have as big of an issue if they were coming in asking for something that's allowed within PBC, saying, "Well, we can't do the medical office, but we can do retail," or one of the other, you know, there's a whole lot of things that you can do. It's very similar to NRC or something kind of commercial uses. That might make more sense. But to come in and say, "You're pulling the commercial piece out of a PBC," makes no sense. And I guess to do yours, to reposition and do the whole thing, you'd have to get every property owner within the PBC to sign a zoning application, you know.
Well, it's only 14, I would rate, or 15.
Well, 14 plus the apartment complexes. It's not a lot.
You couldn't change that. My position still would be that it's still a non-residential. It's a lot we could put in a category that would be used probably by the PBC because everybody needs storage. And it also put it on the tax base. Right now, it's just sitting in the hopes, and what I'm hearing is that you wanted to keep sitting in the hopes that one day, somebody-
I want them to develop it. And I think they ought to be required.
I want them to develop it, too. And I think this is a good mix.
I honestly think, you know, especially since they've shown their intent not to develop it in a, in a way, that, that maybe code enforcement in the county should pursue them to force them to do the development because it was part of the trade-off of-
That would be the first time in the history of your town.
That would never happen.
I doubt they will, but, but that's really what should happen, and I think-
You can't, you can't force the owner of this property to put in retail or commercial or something else that fits PBC when he thinks that it probably would fail. This would not fail.
Well, but it's a whole project. He's signed on to the whole project, not just to develop pieces of a project. And that's my real problem.
We're beating a dead horse here. Okay, Gaunt and Judy, we're beating the dead horse here. We know where both of you stand.
And keep in mind that staff recommended denial as well.
I got it. I think I know where you're going with this as well. So let's, let's go ahead and move on. Any other comments? Christie or Skip? Christie?
Just in general about PBC, I think the ones that we have on the ground, West Village, Ridgenhour, this one, Town Village is the one up near Town Center, and that one's probably yet to be seen. But I think, in general, the, the most successful part of any of those has been the rental multifamily component. And I don't think that's what the county intended when that ordinance was written and when each of those neighborhoods was approved. We had high hopes for live, work, play, and a combination of uses. And really, out of all of those, the apartments has been the only thing that's really thrived. I think the retail at West Village is probably okay, but we've, we got more apartments and more rental units than we wanted or expected out of all of them. So I understand the frustration. I don't disagree with anything that Mr. Porter said, but I think unfortunately, and the reality is, if this, if these homes were gonna be built, they would have been built. I think the market probably drove some of that and is still driving the fact that this property hasn't been developed. So as much as I would not like to see it pulled away and rezoned to LI, that may very well be the, the most interest that there is or will be in the piece of property. And that's, that's just the reality, even though that's not what we envisioned or wanted or thought we were approving, or the county thought they were approving years ago.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, let's go ahead and make your motion.
I make a motion that we recommend denial of Z-61 and SLOP 6.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Okay, we have a second from Christie, so we'll ask for any other comments or questions. All in favor of motion to deny? All opposed? So we have two opposed and three in favor, so it does pass. And we'll see what happens at the BOC level. Thank you, John. Good discussion. Could put a bait shop there, you think?
It was a bait shop, not a-
Bait shop.
No, not a bait. Vape. A smoking shop.
Well, either one. Put a bait shop next to the bake shop. John, what's next? Let's move on.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we're on a other business agenda to consider amendments to the Cobb County Code.
We do, Dana.
Mr. Johnson will present that.
That's a hard act to follow, Dana, but we're gonna give you a shot at it.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development. I am here to present to you and ask you to please open up a public hearing as it relates to code amendments that are working its way through the process. And if I'm not mistaken, sir, I think your direction to me earlier at work session was to concentrate on Section 134. Is that, if that's, if that's accurate?
Yes, because we're hungry.
So with that being said, in Section 134, there are a couple of changes. We'll start with Section 134-1, which is changes to the definitions. We have a cha, a new definition for mobile food vendors. We also have a change to definitions for single-family dwelling units, changing from day, night to day as it relates to the parked vehicles on a parcel or adjacent to a parcel. We also have a change in definition for temporary uses, where we have added mobile food vendors in under the temporary uses. On Section 134-94, under the powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals, this is a change that is coming back into the code or recommended to come back into the code that was previously in here, which states that changes, reductions in road frontage and lot size variances, if they are approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, would come back for ratification with the Board of Commissioners at their next available hearing. Section 134-271, under special exemptions, is a companion article with that, that, again, it just kind of helps put together the framework for how the process occurs for those to come back through for, for ratification by the Board of Commissioners as it relates to the lot size and the road frontage variances.